February eighteenth, twenty twenty one, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the two thousand and twenty-one resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-one through January two thousand and twenty-two. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Legal Notice on the Adoption of Said Resolution was published in the January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website wwwprincetonnewjersey.gov.gov/calendar. Pursuant to Executive Order one oh seven, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-nineteen coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, and this notice was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April eighth, two thousand and twenty, and again on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please note, as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise their hand, that is, using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant's screen, or participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or related to matters not before the board will be immediately muted. The raise-hand feature is not the same as the thumbs-up icon or the applause icon. If you are having difficulty accessing this feature, use the question-and-answer dialogue box to let tech support know, and they will try to assist you. Um, let's see, let's let's have the the roll called, and then I have an announcement, so.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Cohen?
I'm sorry, did I have an announcement?
No, I'm just doing a roll call.
Oh, here.
Mr. Cohen, thank you. Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman? Mr. Oakman?
Here, here.
Yeah. Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Tex Zarni?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we continue, I should say that I have emailed most of you, I hope, an announcement, or rather Carrie has, regarding my status on this particular application. So let me read the statement that I did send to you, and then we'll go on. In the last two days, I have received a number of complaints, queries, and comments from residents about my participation in the current Planning Board hearing on a Princeton University Development Application. I discussed my involvement in this application with the Princeton Planning Board attorney Jerry Mueller and received his approval to continue my participation. To avoid any perceived conflict of interest, I have decided to recuse myself from the Princeton University application, currently under review by the Princeton Planning Board. I do this out of an abundance of caution, so that the review process will be clearly defined. So that having been said, let's move on to the application, and Louise Wilson will be chairing the meeting. Louise, if you'd like to come, take the chair.
Thank you. Thank you, madam.
I have just a couple of housekeeping matters, and I want to say with respect to to Rhonda's, one of his recusal. I mean, in my opinion, clearly there was no conflict. She's being very cautious, I admire that. Given that she's recused herself, you know, any comments that she's ma- she made during the course of the hearing thus far, the board shouldn't consider them, although I don't think they were. I can't recall one that was made that was either pro-application or anti-application, but in any event. Second, we had promised Mr. Afrin that we would bring him over as a panelist. He's going to mute himself and only participate when it, when it's time for him to do course examination, or although if he has an objection, he will, you know, indicate that. Also, I wanted to swear in a Phil. Phil, if you could raise your right hand. What I'm going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the oath of office, which I have, and then you just repeat it, okay?
All right.
I, I Philip Chow.
I Philip Chow.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in, and in this state, under the authority of the people.
And to the, I'm sorry, I missed that, and to the government.
And I was, I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, we said, and to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the government that established, that's been established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
I do further solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and unjustly.
That I will faithfully and impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of alternate, your alternate one, correct?
I believe two.
Oh, you're two, and no one is one? Okay. Well, alternate one on the planning board. I'll read that again. And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of the office of altern- alternate one.
Alternative.
Where is alternate? Well, I'm sorry, alternate two. Should I read that again?
But I, I will justly and partially and affirmatively.
Perform, perform all the duties of the office of alternate.
Of the office of of alternate two.
Two on the planning board, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
In the best of my abilities, so help me God.
So sworn. Okay, thank you.
Jerry?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say, I might potentially speak if there's a rare need for an objection thus far, there's been none, no need for that, but just to let you know, I might interject ahead of my own examination.
Yeah, and I, and I had indicated that to the board, I don't know if you, you were able to hear that.
Oh, that's fine. I also may cut off my picture if I'm preparing my papers, I don't want to be a distraction to any.
Sure, okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Chow, you, I am amazed at how many of those sentences you got right, because every time I've heard somebody sworn in, it's like three words at a time. Three words at a time, that was, that was very tough. Uh, anyway, are there other announcements to be made? Okay. When I, I will introduce the application that we're continuing, and then after Mr. Mueller speaks to proper notice and jurisdiction, I'll ask Justin Lesko to let us all know, especially those who are attendees and not participants, how many people are attending the meeting? And I'll ask a combination of Mr. Mueller and Mr. La Place to sort of scope out what's happening this evening, because, you know, we'll have a break in the middle of things, and then we'll have a hard stop at eleven, but would be good to just sort of introduce where we are in the application and what comes next. So this application is from the trustees of Princeton University, it's continued from January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. It's preliminary and final major site plan for the Tiger and Operations Projects at Fitz Randolph and Faculty Roads Block fifty-point-zero-one, Lot eighteen, file number P two thousand and twenty dash eight-seven-one P. And the deadline for action is February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Maybe there, maybe the notice and jurisdiction is already long since done, but Mr. Mueller, if you could speak to that?
Yes, in fact, back when we orig- we started, which was on December third, we took jurisdiction as to the adequacy of the notice. We reserved the question of jurisdiction on other grounds, because Mr. Afrin wanted to challenge it on other grounds, and I believe it said he did not think it was a permitted, permitted use or accessory use, but we'll hear our argument assumably on that by Mr. Afrin, but we do have jurisdiction.
Okay. Um, Mr. Lesko, could you give us sort of an overview of the number of people who are participating and attending tonight?
Yes, absolutely. This is Justin Lesko here, Senior Planner for the municipality. We have eighty-six participants tonight, twenty-eight are panelists, and fifty-eight are attendees at this time. And that number, I've toggled on that you're, that all attendees can see the number of participants. So that number should be readily available. Once again, twenty-eight panelists and fifty-eight attendees.
Okay. And for the attendees, the panelists are members of the Planning Board, obviously, our staff and professionals, and the applicant and the applicant's professionals. So Mr. La Place, can you talk about what, what exactly we're doing tonight?
Certainly, Madam Chair, Madam Acting, Madam Vice Chair. Sorry, I didn't know quite how to address you. We are having before us a continuation of the hearing on the Tiger facility at Princeton University. I don't know if their attorney wants to pick up where he left off, or Ron, do you want to sort of take, pick up where we left off? Yes. I, I do want to know one thing, just to add to Justin's report, in addition to the panelists, it's also Mr. Afrin is in the panelists.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I, I would, I would like, I just wanted, Jerry, just one question in terms of the board members, because I, I have, I know someone was sworn in this evening. Do we have a full board, I think, that has either participated or have reviewed the videos? I just want to make sure.
Yes, the only person that did not review all the videos is Julie Capizoli, and she is not participating.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Michael, are, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay, so for the record, my name is Christopher Degrizia for the, from the law firm Figury, Drinker, Biddle, and Reeve. And as you know, I represent Princeton University in the current application. The university has continued to evaluate and improve upon the plan, and we have some interesting design elements that we would like to introduce, and we thought we would start this evening off with a short, very short presentation to discuss those, those changes that we are now proposing. And with that, I'd like to introduce Ron McCoy, again, the university architect, he has previously been qualified and sworn in.
Thank you, Christopher. Good evening, members of the board. Can I get permission to share my screen?
Sure you can. Carrie, are you handling that, or Justin?
I just did, you should be able to get it now. Let me know.
Got it.
Please.
And, and Jerry, is this our third at this point? So this would be A dash three?
Exactly.
So A dash three is our third exhibit, and it is a PowerPoint presentation.
Great, as Christopher said, we just have about eighteen slides here, something like that, to share with you to describe the updates in the design since our, our last meeting. I'm not going to go backward, other than to say one thing, which is to remind the board of the very purpose of this project, which is the significant advancement of the university's ambitions to achieve carbon neutrality. You'll remember in the first presentation on December third, we talked about the diagram that gets us from two thousand and sixteen to carbon neutral by two thousand and thirty-six, and a major piece of those strategies involves the conversion of the entire campus to a georexchange heating and cooling system. So this project will serve the eastern campus, there'll be one that will serve the western campus, and there will be one that will serve the new late campus. So following our last meeting, we had several meetings with our design team, and we challenged ourselves to find additional ways to mitigate the noise emanating from the buildings, from the building, the Tiger Building. We also had a meeting last weekend with the neighbors to review the progress that we've made, and so I think that was also something the board encourages to do, is to have a conversation with our neighbors and to have a, a, a sort of more intimate dialogue outside of the context of something like this. What our, our challenge to ourselves was to further ensure that the facility would be consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and we think we've identified some significant additional ways that we can, we can achieve that, and we want to share those with you today. So you'll see on the left-hand slide, this is slide two, that there are three items there. One is additional sound enclosure around the transformers, and I'll get to, I'll show a detailed slide of that in just a second. You'll recall, in our last meeting, there was some conversation about whether or not the transformers would be, could be relocated to the west side of the tanks. I pointed out that that would conflict with the desire from the neighborhood to screen the tanks with landscape, but instead, we could make a commitment to surround those tanks with a sound enclosure. So we're, we're coming back tonight to show our progress on that. The, the third, I'm going to go to the third point, and the third bullet here, which is really the addition of an additional acoustic wall along the east facade of the Tiger and AO building. And that's the most significant change that will, that will, I'll show, that will reduce the sound and noise emanating from the facility. The second point immediately above that is related to the third point, which has to do, which, which is reducing the size of the acoustic louvers on the east side of the building, and I'll get into that as I get into the details. So now on slide three, you'll see all we're doing here is highlighting the location of the transformers, everybody's referenced, it's between the Tiger Building, the south end of the Tiger Building, and the two thermal energy storage tanks. Now on slide four, we have a blow, a detailed plan of that transformer building. North is to the left on this plan, we've rotated it. And on the upper left, you'll see the original design that we presented on December third, which was simply a security screening around that transformer. And on the bottom, you'll see, bottom left, the redesign is a thirteen-foot-six tall nose, noise shield metal acoustic panel system, and that goes on all four sides of the transformer. There are two access doors on the southern side facing the, the thermal energy storage tanks, and those doors would also be insulated metal panel doors. So this will, this goes toward responding to the point we made in the last meeting, and I'll show you the results of this as we go to the noise contour diagrams in a few minutes. The second major design change that we made is highlighted here in the plan, it has to do with the eastern side of the Tiger Building, we're on slide five. And then if I go to slide six, we can see a detailed plan of the chiller room and the Tiger Building, and also the site plan. And essentially, what we're doing is wrapping the building with an additional acoustic wall. On the western side, there are louvers on the west and on the, and I'm sorry, and we're wrapping it on the eastern side, there are louvers on the east, and there are louvers on the west, the ones on the west face the campus, it's the ones on the east that face the neighborhood. And we have a, basically, a wall that faces the neighborhood, and then we've even wrapped it on the northern end, you can see here, to capture any escaping sound that would go to the north toward the UNO facility. Now, the next slide, slide seven, talks about how the louvers are adjusted in this configuration. On the top diagram, you'll see that, you'll see the size of the louvers. The louvers were screened originally in that design by a perforated metal panel. That perforated metal panel was a kind of visual screen to the louvers, being mindful of the character of the neighborhood. By putting in the wall, that, and that, and that perforated metal screen served to reduce the amount of free air that was going through those louvers. So by adding this new wall, which you see in the redesign, we didn't need the perforated metal panel, therefore, we could reduce the size of the louvers and maintain the free area of air that would go in, that would be taken in through those louvers. So the louvers are now, are hidden behind the, by the new acoustic wall. The new acoustic wall will either be a acoustic metal panel system, similar to what we're putting around the transformer, or it will be a concrete wall with a acoustic plaster, sometimes called Pyrock as a brand name, on the inside face facing the louvers. Those two technologies, whether or not it's the acoustic metal panel system or the concrete wall, are still being studied, but their acoustic performance is identical. So in terms of the acoustic modeling, it's irrelevant which those, which of those elements we choose. So basically, wrapping a wall around the louvers and reducing the size of louvers is the strategy. So now, I will just give an introduction to the sound levels, we're on slide nine. Julie Fisher is here tonight, and she can answer detailed questions about the sound modeling. And what we're showing here is the original sound contours that you can see, and you can see the Tiger here in the middle of that sort of target of the sound contours. I'm going to talk about location four and location two. Two is basically the UNO facility, location four is the, is the nearest residence. And if you, to remind you of the legend here, the green were the daytime ambient sound levels, the orange were the ambient sound levels really in the evening, and the blue were the predicted sound levels from all of the equipment operating in Tiger. And you can see that here it was forty to forty-five at location four, and it was forty-five to fifty at location two. The new design now on slide ten shows that, that number that was previously forty to forty-five at location four has been reduced to thirty, thirty-five. And similarly, the number at location two, which was thirty-five to forty, which was forty-five to fifty before, is now thirty-five to forty. So we've been able to bring those, those two readings down significantly, and obviously, you can see how the entire sound contours constrict or, or kind of pull in. So slide eleven shows that comparison of the original design on December third on the left, and the redesign that we're proposing and that we met with the neighbors last weekend on. That's why it's dated February thirteenth, we showed that to them last weekend, that's, that's on the right. So that's, that's the significant reduction. Now, there's another way that we have been looking at the, at the ambient levels and the predicted level of the Tiger facility in these, these graphs. These are graphs that come from the twenty-four-seven noise monitors that we have on different sites in the neighborhood. You'll see the green color of the chart is the site trailer, so that's on the construction site, and you'll always see that being, being the noisiest. One sixty-eight Fitz Randolph is the, is another meter, and a third meter was put at forty-four Hartley. What we're showing here in this, you'll see that each, each one of these is a day of the week, this is a Friday through a Wednesday, so we capture a weekend, so that we can compare the difference between weekend ambient noise and weekday ambient noise. And this band shown here on the left was a the, the band of the original design, which was between forty and forty-five DBA. And you'll see with these changes in the redesign, we bring that down to thirty to thirty-five. And then if you look at that band across all days of the week, or all six days shown in this graph, you'll see that it's even below the, the ambient in the neighborhood, and there is occasionally, there'll be a super quiet moment in the early minutes of the morning, and you'll see even that dips down into a band which is shared with the ambient noise that would be captured by the, the Tiger facility. At the top here, you'll see the date of this data was back in January fifteenth, January twentieth. We did another analysis on more recent data from February fifth to February tenth, and this was after we added a sound sensor at, at UNO. The results are still the same with the predictive level in this band below the ambient levels of the neighborhood. In all days, again, you'll do see a dip into the same band of ambient noise for some hours in the early morning at, at Wednesday night, seems to be a quiet night in the neighborhood. And then the renderings are simply just to, to remind us of how the changes might look. This was the original design, I'm on slide thirteen, showing the, you'll see this colored tone was the perforated metal panels that were screening the louvers. And I should say that the louvers are still there in terms of their effectiveness, it's, this is not an either-or, we haven't replaced the louvers with the sound wall. It's a kind of belts and suspenders, we've kept the eighteen-inch acoustic high-performance louvers, and we've added the sound wall. This drawing, number fourteen, page fourteen, simply reduces or eliminates the trees, pulls the trees away, and you'll see the concrete wall or the metal wall, which is shielding the louvers, and now the louvers are not visible. And then when we put the landscape back on slide fifteen here, you'll see the trees in, in front of those, that, that wall and the, the sort of look of the facility. So that's really what we wanted to share with, we, as I said, our, our, our objective since the last meeting was to challenge ourselves and our design team to make the facility even sort of more compliant with the conditions or the character of the neighborhood, and we've meant, been able to move the, the, the sound band of the predicted levels below anything that one would experience in the neighbor, neighborhood, with exception of those couple, couple hours here and there. So that's, that's the end of that presentation, so I will stop sharing my screen.
You're on.
Thank you very much, both for the presentation and for the redesign and for your meeting with the neighbors.
Welcome. We're glad that we could actually do all that.
Mm-hmm.
So, so at, at this point, we've concluded our testimony, and the last two meetings, there was a lot of questions and public comments, and I think we left off with the continuation, I guess, of, of that.
That's correct.
Okay. So, Ms. Sax, did you have a question?
Oh, I just, if, if there are going to be questions from the board, I did have a, a couple of questions, but that what you were moving to?
Yes, I want to ask board members if you've got any quick questions about the presentation to ask them now, and then we should continue with comments from the public. And before we start that, I'll go over a slightly different protocol for the Q and A with the public, which maybe will add to people's ability to anticipate what's coming next, but go ahead, Mia.
Um, I, first, I wanted to say that I appreciate that this conversation in a more informal setting took place, and that the university did follow up and, and speak with the neighbors, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that something came out of it. And that, that's encouraging. I, and I'm just wondering, Mr. McCoy, wait, so when you first, you, you first started your presentation, you, you said you were going to just provide a few updates, and you referred to the new periphery as the new wall as a, as a design element. And so, but I, I mean, it's really much, it's, it's not, I mean, I, it's, it's, it has a very sick, I'm just wondering if you can speak to, I mean, you, you gave us the acoustical implications, but this, this seems to me to be a, a very significant change. And, and I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I think Julie Fisher could probably comment on that, our, our noise, our sound consultant.
Okay.
Julie?
Can I just jump in there? Ms. Sax, did you finish your question?
Well, I mean, this seemed, I just wanted, yeah, I wanted to sort of hear, place it in the context of a lot of the other things that we've heard in terms of the noise analysis. And also, I don't know if this is a question that one can ask in a hearing like this, but you know, in your discussions with the neighbors, did this seem to, and either of the attorneys can jump in if this is inappropriate, but I'm just wondering, did this seem to allay any of the concerns and anxieties that in your conversations with the neighbors? Did they? Did that seem to allay any of their concerns?
Yeah, I would jump in, Mia, I'm sorry. Thank you. Effectively, you're really asking Mr. McCoy to comment on the state of mind of the neighbors. And that's really normally not something a witness can do. So I would note my objection in that direction.
Okay.
I think the objection is well founded. And I would just direct that at the neighbors. The question.
I think we'll find that out pretty soon.
I'll be holding my breath.
But did you have, was part of your question, Mia, about not just acoustics, but as a design element? Or do you want anybody to speak to that?
It just seems like, it seems much more significant than a design element. I did want to hear from Julie, just to place it, you know, in a comparison to what we heard earlier.
Sure. So our original design was meant to meet the state noise code and to go better than that, which we have shown in our previous presentations that we did. But we heard the neighbors, and we heard that they still wanted to see more. And so we basically took an approach that, you know, we've been kind of comparing to a belt and suspenders approach. So we had a belt with our first, which accomplished what we needed to accomplish. But we added suspenders to it in order to make sure that we were doing everything we could within the parameters of this project in order to get those noise levels down to much closer and then below the ambient levels that are on site. So we really wanted to make sure we were using all of the tools available in our tool chest.
Other board members have any questions? Okay, then let's continue then with public comment. Mr. Cohen, are you managing that, or is Mr. Lesko managing that?
Mr. Lesko has taken over that.
Okay. So to members of the public, if you wish to speak, you need to click on the raise hand icon, the bottom center of your screen. And as was said earlier in the meeting, you'll be asked to speak in the order in which your hand was raised. Mr. Lesko will read out the first person up and also the second person. So and we'll sort of keep a running, you know, here's who's next. And here's the person that's going to come after this person so that you can gather your thoughts and be ready to step in when you're called on. Does that sound? Okay?
I'll just comment that I think we also talked about him announcing how many people were in the queue.
In the queue overall, that's right. That's, you're right, you're right about that. So Mr. Lesko, who do we have up first and second, and how many people overall have raised their hands?
Sure, right now, we have, okay, numbers are starting to add up now. We have six, seven right now. The first one is the letter G and Bass or Base. Andrew Watzke, Tariq Shabender, and Todd Cronin. Those are the first four. I'm going to promote them one by one to panelists so that you could see their video as well.
Good, yes.
There will be a slight lag for the person, but then they'll be promoted to panelists.
Okay.
Madam, one more question, Madam Vice Chair, or maybe this is for Jerry. Do we know which residents are represented by Mr. Afrin?
Yes. And it's, go ahead, Bruce, do you want to?
Yeah, I don't believe my clients are speaking at this point.
Okay.
Helen Nissenbaum and Peter.
Peters, right.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, that's a good, thank you, that's a good point.
I mean, they can testify, but it would be through Bruce. Bruce would call them as witnesses.
Okay.
So I will start now by promoting G Bass to panelist, and then they can ask their questions.
And we ask that when you are promoted to panelist, you turn on your camera so that the board can see you.
Hi, my name is Gary Bass. Hopefully people can see me, I'm not sure.
We can see your name, Mr. Bass.
All right.
Can you click on your
Here you go.
Camera icon, and there you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Bass.
Be sworn in.
Yep, you have not testified before in this application, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I swear that the testimony I'm about to give will be the truth.
So smart. If you could state your full name and spell your last name.
Gary Bass, B-A-S-S.
Thank you.
I'm a professor at the university in the School of Public and International Affairs in the Politics Department. And I'm not a neighbor to the plant, but my daughter goes to UNO. And I came to this with an open mind, but I'm come away really troubled by the plan to build a massive facility right next door to my daughter's daycare center. I'm very much for the plant, and I'm very much for carbon neutrality. But it seems to me that the university's assumptions rely on a considerable degree of optimism about how well this is going to go. When you're constructing a facility like this, I assume that things will go wrong in the same way that when there was a leak in my building at the university, it took months and months and months to fix. That's normal, that's how these things go. The problem is, what if you do this with a massive geo exchange plant that's right next to a daycare? And that seems to me to be sort of based on a very, very optimistic scenario that we were just presented with a series of numbers. And there was no doubt about these numbers, that it was a hundred percent the way it was going to turn out. And that strikes me as quite unlikely for any undertaking of this kind, that things are likely to go wrong. Things are likely to turn out not according to plan. And it's not clear to me exactly what the fallback position is if this thing is built, and it turns out to be noisier than we're told it's going to be. Stanford has located its equivalent plant much farther away from residential areas, and that seems to me prudent. And the university, in its original plan from 2017, had this right next to Denunzio Pool and a parking lot. And that seems to me to make a lot more sense than putting it next to a playground with toddlers and babies and preschoolers. Those are constituents who don't really get to speak. My concern is not, I don't live in that neighborhood. I'm sure that those neighbors have legitimate concerns. But my concern is that my four-year-old is not going to be able to be on her playground because this thing is going to be making noise. So my question is, why not just put it next to Denunzio Pool? That seemed, to me, would be an option that would allay my concerns. I'm troubled by the fact that the noise estimates keep moving. They keep jumping around all over the place. To me, that suggests that we don't really know how noisy it will be when it's done, and that there's a certain amount of optimism being built in. And I tend to be pessimistic when you're building a very, very large building that won't be able to be moved once it's there. So it seems to me to make much more sense to start with a different location. And I wonder if we could get some response to that.
Before we talk about the location, maybe it would be helpful to remind, if Julie could remind the board about the two different sets of numbers that have been published. One preliminary set of numbers, one after the equipment was specified. And then, of course, there's this third set of numbers that we're looking at here tonight, which is a result of a redesign. So I think there's a pretty clear explanation about those three sets of numbers. So but Julie should give those numbers. And then also, Julie, maybe you could talk about the, there seems to be some doubt about reliability of those calculations. So maybe you can talk about the computer modeling and the reliability of the computer modeling.
Sure, I can speak to that. So to start with, we've discussed this at last planning board meetings, but the numbers have changed due to the evolution of the design throughout the process of the building being designed. So we start off with you kind of far out sketch of what we think is going to go. And as we zero in over the course of design, the natural evolution takes place, and that does cause the numbers to change somewhat. The change between the numbers that were seen at the last planning board meeting and this planning board meeting are because we have added a new design element in the shape of a very long, large barrier wall that would be between the UNO facility and the louvers, which are the main source of noise from the building. As far as the model goes and its accuracy, the model is based on international standards. It is used throughout my industry for calculations of this nature. And the data that is put in is test data from laboratories for various mechanical equipment. So it is actually quite an accurate model.
Okay, I'll talk about the site location, just a couple of things. I think that, again, by the sound graphs that we've shown and by the data that we've shown, I think that we want to keep the conversation focused on the actual predicted sound, which is below the ambient noise of the neighborhood. So I think we can say with confidence that it will not be an impact on the character of the neighborhood. If we look at Stanford, it's a very different technology. Didn't have a geo exchange well field next to it. And as we've said, we need to kind of co-locate as much as possible that you exchange field to the Tiger facility, to the buildings that they serve. The Stanford model is a very different model that doesn't have a geo exchange field and has a little bit more flexibility in where it was located. But primarily, it was located where the previous, in the vicinity of the previous plant, so that it could minimize the cost of rerouting utilities to a new point on campus. And to the third point about the campus master plan that showed it located at the base of the potential flyover, the campus master plan said, I think, five or 10 times, maybe more, that the master plan is a, the campus plan is a flexible tool, flexible framework. It's not a legal document, it's not a commitment. It's hard to plan more than 10 years in advance and identify specific sites. And as we got into our, and the campus plan also said that evolving needs of the university would take place and that we would make adjustments as those evolving needs became realized. As we began to look more at it more detailed of the East Campus, we thought that, we began to realize that saving the land at the base of the flyover was a higher priority opportunity site that could, should be held in reserve to serve the unpredicted future needs of the institution and serve the mission of the institution. And that a building like this, which is really unmanned and quiet, doesn't have traffic in and out of it, would be well suited on the Fitz Randolph site.
Can I just respond to that? That when I think about the, first of all, on the question of sound estimates, that my concern was that these were optimistic and that it was an assumption that everything would go to plan. And the response, as I take it, was that everything will go to plan. So that leaves my question of what's going to happen if things don't go exactly to plan, and this thing turns out to be noisier than it's predicted. That models sometimes have collisions with the real world that don't turn out that well for the model. As to Mr. McCoy's point, the unpredicted future needs of the institution, it would seem to me should yield to the concern about my four-year-old's daycare. When I was, this fall, I was chairing a hiring committee at the university, and one of the selling points that I used for our job candidate was how wonderful UNO was and what a great place this was to raise kids. So this is something that actually is a need of the university. And I could imagine if you said, you know, next to Denunzio Pool, that's where we're building a residential college and that slated. But if what you're saying is there was a blank space that we might want to use at some further point, let's use it now. You have a need, great, put it there, problem solved. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, since Mr. Bass wasn't at previous meetings, ask if the sound consultant could also talk a little bit about the WHO, World Health Organization, recommended noise standards for facilities like the UNO facility and how this project relates to those standards.
Sure, so we did take a look at the WHO.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going to raise an objection. Last week, at the last meeting, Ms. Fisher spoke to the report. The report was not presented, Ms. Fisher did not say when she reviewed the report, what her source of the information was. So I didn't have the opportunity to object last week, but a foundation does need to be laid as to Ms. Fisher's source of knowledge of the WHO materials. And frankly, what report it was, and is it here?
Maybe Ms. Fisher could do that.
Sure, so the WHO guidelines are international guidelines that are published and are well-known throughout our industry, and they are easily found via internet research.
I'm going to make a continuing objection because that doesn't provide a foundation at all. Saying they can be found via internet research does not indicate whether Ms. Fisher has in fact done that research. It doesn't let any of us know what the source material is. It's not part of any report, as far as I know, and it needs to be both identified and produced on this record. So I continue to.
I would like to clarify that that report is irrelevant. So New Jersey has really clear state standards. It was asked by neighbors who cited the report, and Julie Fisher responded because she's familiar with it, because she's in the industry. The applicable standard here is the state standard. That is what controls. We've showed repeatedly and through the modeling that we will meet that standard on every level.
I don't recall whether neighbors raised the issue of the WHO standards. I do recall.
It was, it was a question.
Well, Ms. Fisher introduced it in the answer, no matter what, or she introduced it on her own. Secondly, I think it was Mr. Cohen who just asked to address that. And I could not object last week, and I still maintain the same position. If this is going to come out as testimony, whether the university's attorney thinks it's particularly relevant or not is beside the point. We need more than just someone saying it's out on the internet, people find it. We need to have documentation as to what Ms. Fisher is backing this into or should not be offered on the record in response to a question or as direct testimony.
As the acoustical consultant for the municipality of Princeton, I can corroborate Ms. Fisher's testimony and say that thirty-five DBA standard we're talking about here is well-recognized, is easily found, and should be accepted as correct as, you know, given my duty to protect the public.
My objection continues. We now have a second expert saying it's out there. Two experts say it's so well-known, yet none of them have it with them. None of them can identify the actual report.
Mr. Afrin, my role here is not to produce records. My role is to serve as a consultant for the township, to the municipality.
So to clarify, the report was referenced and brought up at the first hearing by the neighbors in the neighborhood. It is not relevant here in terms of meeting and satisfying the noise control standard in the state of New Jersey. We have those standards that control. To the extent that those questions were raised and statements made by neighbors, which were false statements, Julie, in her presentation last time, addressed it and clarified that, you know, they were taking external standards and internal standards and using it as external standards. And she went through and explained it for the purpose of clarifying the statements that were made by the general public, which are not licensed professionals in the industry.
If the material is being referred to by people testifying, clarification or otherwise, particularly if they're clarifying, the material needs to be identified. And if it is something common to the expert's usage, it should be produced. The other point I'll raise is it is relevant to the question of whether the project is harmoniously related to its surroundings, which, as Mr. De Grazio must acknowledge.
Where's that standard? Where's that requirement? There's no harmonious requirement.
It's actually in the professionals' report from the planning board, who have stated that they found it is harmoniously related. And therefore it is certainly relevant on that ground as well. The source
How is that a WHO standard? It's not relevant, Bruce. It's not New Jersey law.
I don't argue. The point is, unless we have a document to back it up.
Okay.
Joe, can you find, find the appropriate documentation? Would that be difficult, Dave?
I have the citation of the document.
Okay.
Would it be helpful?
Yes.
It's called the new, it's called the WHO Guidelines for Community Noise, edited by Brigitta, B-R-I-G-I-T-T-A, Bergland, B-E-R-G-L-U-N-D, comma, and Thomas Lindvall, L-I-N-D-V-A-L-L, and Dietrich H. Schweller, S-C-H-W-E-L-A, published by the World Health Organization in Geneva in April 2000.
Thank you. And what was the name again, Ron?
The WHO Guidelines for Community Noise.
Thank you.
May we ask if that's the same report Ms. Fisher was referring to?
I have seen it and I have reviewed it.
My question was, is that the same report Ms. Fisher was referring to?
I have seen it and I have reviewed it.
I know you've seen that report, but when you gave your testimony at the last meeting about what the WHO accepts, was that the same report you were referring to?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would also say it, the report has the same information that Julie reported on. They are consistent.
I appreciate asking so we can go look.
So to Mr. Cohen's question, which he's probably sorry he asked.
Not in the least. But I do still want to hear the answer.
Thank you. Do you, do you remember it, Ms. Fisher?
Sure. So the WHO guidelines, as they relate to the UNOW facility, state that the interior noise levels are 35 dBA for instructional spaces and 30 dBA for spaces where children are, are sleeping. We have showed in our previous presentation that the noise levels at the UNOW will be 40 to 45 dBA on the playground and that those will reduce by 15 dBA as they go from the interior of the building to, sorry, from the exterior of the building to the interior of the building, which would put us well within the WHO guidelines.
And just to clarify, were those numbers based on the previous design?
Yes, they were.
So would you anticipate that compliance would be even more, more favorable than with the
Yes, we will have a further reduction in those noise levels interior to the UNOW facility. So where before we were meeting them, now we are meeting them by quite a bit more.
Is there a separate standard for, that would apply to the playground?
The playground is an exterior noise level and I believe that was 55 dBA.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lesko, who is up next and who is after that person?
Sure, up next is Andrew Watzke and I will move them over as we speak. And then following them is Tariq Shawbender.
Okay, and the overall number of hands raised right now?
There are six plus Mr. Watzke.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I think I was sworn in last time, so can I just go ahead?
Yes.
I have a very simple statement, a very simple question, and I'm going to keep it very brief, although I'd like to say that I agreed with everything Gary Bass was, just said. My question, or my question is this, that we've just heard that the new plan will mitigate noise and that basically we're going to have a 10 dBA reduction in sound from before. And my question is, and I've asked something like this before, but not gotten a direct response, is will the university commit to making any adjustments and mitigations necessary if the new projections about noise numbers prove wrong? Again, things don't always work out as they sometimes are planned. The, the response that I've gotten before, as I recall, was that, well, we will, we will adhere to the New Jersey state standard, which is quite different from the projections and promises, or I guess they're not promises, projections, that we have heard. And so my question is, will the university commit to its new projections rather than falling back on the New Jersey state standard?
I, I think we answered it last time. We will
Let, 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 yeah, let's not go back over that, but
Okay.
Will they, just a yes or no answer?
The, we will follow the state, we will commit to compliance with the state standard. So is the applicable standard.
So let me confirm that the
We don't have to confirm, we are following the state standard and we will, we will make sure we meet that standard.
So the answer to
Models show much less.
So the answer to, the answer to the question is no.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thanks, Mr. Watzke. I know that's not a satisfactory answer for you, but do, do you have any other questions that you want to pose?
No, I, I appreciate your indicating my dissatisfaction with that answer. And I would simply like to put it out there and let people remember that that is the answer. I find it very unsatisfactory.
Thank you. Mr. Lesko?
Yes, next up, we have Tariq Shawbender. I will move them over right now, followed by Todd Cronin. I'm also going to move Mr. Watzke back to an attendee.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You've been sworn in, Mr. Shawbender, I believe?
Yes, I have. I've said it previously at additional meetings, so I believe I have, yes.
Okay.
Again, my name is Tarek, oh, I'm sorry, guy.
Please go ahead, excuse me.
My name is Tarek Shawbender. I'm actually a neighbor to Andy. He's my next-door neighbor. My home is located at 70 Hartley Avenue, right around the corner from this proposed utility facility. I, I have historically made comments regarding my dismay regarding this plant being built in a residential neighborhood. And I'd like to follow up on that with another statement tonight that I've prepared. First, I'd like to thank the town of Princeton for providing this forum to review the project. I believe we're doing everything you can to look out for their local residents. I commend you for your attention to the details on this project. But also like to thank the university for sharing the plans and project information with the community and for being willing to adapt and adjust based on input. On my additional thoughts, and it does kind of mirror what Andy just mentioned, I think one of the biggest issues our neighborhood faces is the amount of noise pollution this facility will generate and how to manage it. I know there have been a variety of presentations made to the planning board and the local residents. These presentations have contained a number of different sound projections and have changed repeatedly. Excuse my telephone in the back. I'm afraid I've lost confidence in most of these projections as they seem to change based on the current objections of the management team. Once again, this evening's presentation contains sound level projections based on the redesign of the utility facility. The current projected levels seem very reasonable and if accurate, have seemingly solved the bulk of the noise issue. The university's claiming that the noise levels will now fall below ambient noise level standards. The concern I have is if these levels are wrong, we, the local neighborhood and residents, pay the price. When you look at the situation from our perspective, the university's going to get their central utility plant built in a residential neighborhood. They generally keep the original design, sands a wall or two and a few different louvers, and we get a promise that the sound levels will be under the current ambient levels. Sounds like a great plan, except if the levels are wrong, we pay the price. The university has indicated that they are 100% positive that their numbers are accurate. If that's the case, why won't they put in writing that they will conduct sound level measurements after the plant is in operation and commit in writing to remedy and address those sound levels if they exist? Seems like a pretty simple thing to do. They're claiming their numbers are accurate, but won't step up to address the problem if they're wrong. That attitude just doesn't seem right. With that said, I would like to ask the planning board to add a condition to the potential approval that mandates the university to hire an independent third-party firm to measure the sound after the facility is built and in operation and require them to bring the sound levels to the levels they are presenting here tonight. They've got to put some skin in the game here. They're asking us to assume responsibility for their success and they're unwilling to step up and work with it. I think so, this will solve a lot of the problems associated with this project and it'll allow everyone to move forward with this committed understanding that if there is an issue, once this project is complete, it will be resolved. The peace, quiet and tranquility of our park-like neighborhood in town is at stake here and I implore the board, you, to include this condition on the potential approval of this project. Again, many thanks to the planning board and the university for facilitating these discussions and thank you and everyone have a good evening.
And next up, we have Todd Cronin. I will move them over and Nathan Arrington will be after him.
Hello, I think you've all seen me before. We're all old friends here.
You've been sworn in, so you can, so you can go right ahead.
Great, thank you. And thank you to everybody, to the planning board. And also thank you, Ron, I, I do appreciate the changes that they've made. And on Saturday, when he gave the presentation, it certainly struck us, many of us, as significant and I, I do want to recognize that. I, I, I am going to just basically reiterate what has just been said though by Gary Bass, Andy Watzke and, and Tarek just a minute ago. And that is about a commitment to make an adjustment if the numbers prove wrong. I think that's, that's the central concern for the neighborhood, which is to say, we're happy with the redesign. We think it's great. We just want something that will, you know, a condition in there, put in there by the planning board that they stick to the numbers because we're satisfied, I think many of us, let's say, are satisfied insofar as if it doesn't move that, that these numbers are the real ones. I, I, there is one, you know, caveat here I have to mention, right? The construction noise is 65 decibels. So this WHO stuff doesn't actually hold for the next year and a half or whatever it is during the construction. So that, that's going to be at 65 from 8:00 AM till 6:00, right? I'm not sure that's been mentioned, but that does not adhere to any WHO. So the playground is not 55, it'll never be 55 during, while it's drilling. So that's at least worth mentioning. And one final point on, then I'll, then I'll be done. I'm kind of just want to come back to Chris because there's something I don't understand here. I gather that the point of a planning board is not just stamping the law, because why is the public here if it's just about adhering to the law? If it's adhering to the law, you don't need a planning board, you just look at the documents and, and sign off on it. But I gather the point of a planning board is, and that the neighbors and they're having their input, is that these things are done in a humane way, right? Which is not exactly the same as the law is the law is the law is the law. There's also city codes and all that, which I'm not even sure Chris knows. There are municipal codes that tell, have a noise standard. Chris, do you know what those municipal codes are? Offhand? Chris?
Are you asking this question of Mr. DeGrazia?
I am, yes.
I'm not testifying tonight.
Yeah, that, I would just step in to say that our role as a board, certainly are limits on what we can ask for and we are bound by the municipal land use law and by state laws such as the state law on noise and that kind of thing. So, you know, yes, we do work with applicants to address concerns of neighbors, but, but there are certainly are limits to what we can, at the end of the day, require.
I, I get it.
In the way of measures that exceed legal requirements or standards. And maybe, Mr. Mahler, do you
Because Jeff Grosser and the Mercer County Health Department, both of them, so Jeff Grosser's in the city and Mercer County, both of them suggest it's, there is not, it's not a fixed number. There is nothing about the, on the books that says it's a fixed number. If they come out here, which they do, they come out here and they stand there on your porch and say, this interrupts with your, your normal habits of life, I can't remember the exact wording, your normal enjoyment of your property, it's a problem. And that's, that's just, that, that is not just the law is the law is the law is the law number. So I just think Christopher's just wrong.
Mr. Cohen? I, I was actually going to ask in this instance, if Mr. Purcell could reflect on what the local ordinance is as opposed to the state ordinance and how it applies in this case. It's a good time for that.
The, the local ordinance, as, as most of you know, is a nuisance ordinance, which actually is only applied when the nuisance ordinance is, is violated. It's, as, as has been stated a number of times, everything that is being done right now is based on sound scientific modeling, based on the actual equipment being installed and the actual construction being proposed to determine what the sound levels are likely to be. I won't say that I'm going, I'm not, I'm not going to guarantee that they're going to be 35 decibels, but they're likely to be based on the actual equipment that's been specified, the construction that's being proposed and the louvers that are being put in place. The nuisance ordinance that the, the municipality relies on is a nuisance ordinance that basically says it's unlawful for continuous or excessive noise that endangers the health, safety and welfare of the community. And the only time that we can actually do anything about that is if that happens. So that's the difference between approving a site plan based on a design and acting on excessive noise after the fact. We cannot speculate at this point whether or not this particular development will cause excessive noise. We can only go in and enforce it once it happens.
Thank you. I just, I just want to reiterate again, that the, the main point I want to take away here is that what really we'd want is a commitment from the university to, to, to the numbers that they provided.
Understood.
Can I just respond briefly? Because I think that the, a lot of the last handful of comments have been, go to the question of trust, which I think has been a kind of foundational issue in this, in this process. And I would say that the, we, we have, if you look at what we've done to the design in response to the different conversations and meetings we've had with the neighbors, we changed our engineering for the capacity of the tanks. We sunk the tanks into the ground as far as they could feasibly go. We rerouted the utilities at the southwest corner of the tank so that it could create more landscape into the tanks. We spent a lot of attention on the design of, of the tanks. We've committed to wrapping the transformer. We've committed to building a new sound wall that basically wraps a wall around the Tiger. So it's not as if we're not been responsive. We, we have consistently engaged in these conversations. And I think to, to distrust us, certainly the record does not warrant that kind of distrust.
Ron, I acknowledge that. I, I, I understand where you're coming from. We have a five-year-old and eight-year-old and we're the, you know, there's one of the two closest properties. We're scared. We're, we're just scared that if this thing gets built and it's in our lives for the rest of our lives here, that, that would be a bad thing. So we're just, and, and we're very appreciative of the new design. It's just, it'd be, it'd be great to get some teeth to it, exactly as Tarek mentioned.
We understand that. We understand the fear, but we are confident that we have, we have confidence in the numbers. These are predictable numbers that are based on simple physics of sound. And we've, we've really, you know, we're, we're starting off at a point that's well below the ambient.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin and Mr. McCoy.
Madam Vice Chair, a question for Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
That speaks to Mr. Cronin's comments. Julie, can you, can you explain the, how the equipment that makes noise and the noise control and the noise control elements that are going in here, such as the louvers and the planned barrier wall, are being specified for this project? And what what standards the actual installed equipment is being held to relative to the design parameters?
Sure. So we have several fail safes within our design. We have the equipment itself, which the noise levels will be specified in the specification, which will mean that a manufacturer cannot submit a piece of equipment that doesn't meet that noise level specification. We have the louvers themselves, which are acoustical louvers and are substantial. They are 18 inches wide. They are made to block sound. They are not typical mechanical louvers. They will also be included in the specification with transmission loss data based on frequency band that will be specified, and that means that the contractor cannot come in and substitute a different type of louver. It will have to be a louver that meets the requirements that we have specified. The wall itself is solid, and it will be either concrete or metal. And again, that will be specified so that substitution cannot be made. We have also provided for absorption on the inside of that wall, which will reduce any echoes or bounces of noise that would occur between louvers and the wall. Again, specified, you could not make a substitution without meeting our acoustical criteria.
And Ron, you'll be asking Julie or her firm to review all the items of acoustical importance, and you'll be taking her comments of exception or rejection.
We will take the specifications. Yes, yes, we will ensure that the assumptions that she's made are delivered in the construction.
Okay. So that reassures me that this design team will be, you know, assuring that the model, sound emissions, aren't going to be appreciably louder than what the prediction is here, because those safeguards are in place. And that is standard acoustical consultant and architect relationship that should be respected to keep that process, you know, adhered to.
So Joe, are you comfortable then putting in some kind of stipulation that if it goes over those numbers, then, you know, they have to come in and remediate?
So my role here is to the municipality, right? We're an independent expert working for the municipality and protecting the public. So what the limit should be is not my decision. I can advise the board on that. I previously testified that I don't see a reason in my professional estimation to hold this application to a lower limit. Whether the board chooses to do so anyways is one that falls outside my area of expertise. But as to whether, as to who would be policing that, I would, and my firm would, that role would potentially fall to me as the municipality's acoustical consultant.
Mr. Cohen? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Keith. I did not mean to interrupt you. Were you done?
All done.
Okay, Mr. Cohen.
So I just wanted to ask if there is the possibility of including in the specifications the acoustical performance of the assembled components. In other words, Ms. Fisher already mentioned that each of the individual components will have a specification requirement to meet suit an acoustical performance standard. But to the fears that some of the residents have mentioned, sometimes those individual components can be put together in a way with gaps where you can get some leakage and so forth. So the question I'm asking is whether the specifications can also require the performance of the assembled components to perform to a certain standard, or is that not?
I wouldn't recommend that. That only the acoustical consultant for the project has the expertise to predict the total outcome. The contractor does not. The architect does not. The mechanical engineer does not. And so who are you really holding that performance requirement to? You know, a smart contractor wouldn't take the job if they read that spec appropriately. You know, so it really falls back to the design team to specify something. So that's why I feel that if there's going to be a limit lower than the state code, that that's the board's decision to make. But again, I wouldn't advise that they do that. Ron and Julie might have something to add to that.
But the board could require that readings be taken after construction is finished to document the decibel level that's being generated by the finished project.
Certainly. I think to Mr. Cronin's concern, it's not just the number that matters, because what the number is, is really so, yes. Stipulating that it be measured after the fact is easy. But what to do if it doesn't make everyone happy is the $64,000 question.
Okay, let's continue with public comment and questions. Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Justin?
Yes, by way of update, we have 68 attendees and five hands raised. Next up is Nathan Arrington, followed by Sarah Tannenbaum.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I've just moved Nathan Arrington over.
I've been sworn in already.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arrington. Go right ahead.
I'm speaking as a you-now parent. You, the board, we, the public, were told at a previous planning meeting that the exchange facility was located next to the daycare because it needed to be next to the buildings it was serving, which are in the vicinity. But we have since found out that there are other locations available that can serve that purpose, as Gary Bass mentioned. Another location is on the university's planning documents. They considered it at one point feasible. The reason it was moved next to a daycare was to reserve the site next to the pool for a future unspecified unplanned athletic facility. That's it. I am disturbed that the other locations are not being rigorously pursued. The graphs that Mr. McCoy has shown at this meeting clearly indicate the construction noises reach 65 decibels, which are well above recommended sound levels for children at school if we apply those very guidelines that Julie Fisher uses in her defense of the building. To some extent, it doesn't matter what sound mitigation goes into effect once the facility is constructed. The damage to the children will be done during construction. I hope someone shows at this meeting the location of the bore holes that will be drilled. They are right next to the playground, even closer than the facility itself. Before proceeding, the university should rigorously pursue other locations and conduct a careful impact study on how the construction and how the facility will affect the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arrington. Mr. Cohen?
I just would like clarification. Are there bore holes that are part of this application? I thought the bore holes were all in the vicinity of the soccer field and not that there were additional ones associated with this this application?
There's no drilling associated with the building application before you.
I can pull up a document if I'm allowed to share a screen that will show bore holes. It's from the university's documents. But somebody else might pull it up.
There were previous applications for general for geothermal wells that were approved for drilling. But this application tonight does not have any wells being drilled or bores being proposed.
So there's going to be no drilling associated with this project?
With the application, the preliminary and final site plan application this evening, there is no drilling being proposed.
I would say that the document, I think that is being that Mr. Arrington is talking about was part of a prior administrative waiver application, and it showed wells under the the tiger facility, and we've made a decision not to drill those wells.
Thank you. Get a reference to the document that Mr. Arrington is referring to. It's now been referred to by three people, and I think we need to know what the document is for the record, because I don't know what it is. Mr. McCoy may very well be right, but there's no point of reference for any of us. I think Mr. Arrington should be permitted to share the document.
Sure, yeah. Mr. Arrington, can you? Yeah, I think you can share the screen on that if you want.
Justin Lesko, would you let Mr. Arrington share his screen?
May I ask if Bernard Chazot is in your line of people to speak? He's not in the line. If you could let Sarah speak first, and I will stay here and find the documents so that I don't waste your time.
Mr. Affleck, we sent the documents to your client, and the town also has the documents.
That's very nice, but no one's ever mentioned them before, and I think if a witness has them with him, he should share it so we can see it, and it probably should be entered into the record. It's been referred to by three people.
No one mentioned it because it's not part of this application.
I understand, but the very fact is that a witness says he thinks it is. We now have counsel and the architect saying it's not, but we have no point of reference for anyone else to know that. You can't have all this.
Look at the application. You could look at the plans, and they're not on them. That's how you know.
The witness, Mr. Arrington, offered to share the document. If he's not ready to share it technically, but will be in a little while, that's one thing, but he should not be barred from doing so.
You can share a document that's not having anything to do with this application, sure.
Well, Mr. Degrassi, I'd like to know that for myself, and I don't know what document Mr. Arrington is referred to. And I would point out, the university itself has changed its plans three times. Or if you count the 2017 proposal and the master plan. So I think it's relevant at this point for us to see that document. It may be just as you say, but I think we need to see it.
I'm not ready at this time to show it, and I am satisfied with the answer that there will be no drilling as part of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Arrington. Mr. Lesko?
Yes, I I will move over Sarah Tannenbaum. And then the other hands that are up are Eleanor Hubbard, Olga Troyenskaya, Manjul Barghava, Carolina Manjone, and it looks like M. Eileen Long was just added. So five more hands.
Okay. I'm just Tannenbaum. You've been sworn before, have you not?
Yes, I have.
Go right ahead.
All right. So, you know, I come here, as you know, I'm not only a parent, but I am a board-certified pediatrician. And there are a couple of points I wanted to make, and then a question. So first, I did want to comment about the WHO's view on noise. And there's actually an updated guideline from 2018. So the one referenced was from 1999, just of note for the records. Maybe that should be the one referenced. There's also an interesting WHO Children's Health and Environment Training Package, what the WHO actually uses to train centers and hospitals on chronic noise in children. And they speak to children's physiology, specifically between six months to five years of age, and their vulnerability to excess noise. Some groups are more vulnerable than others, such as children who are premature, children with dyslexia and hyperactivity, children on autotoxic medication. And the effect is on physical health, such as noise-induced hearing loss, blood pressure increases, which are seen in the mid-60 decibel range, stress hormone increase, which they've demonstrated, psychological health, overall annoyance, sleep issues, and of course cognition, which I mentioned previously. They've actually referenced over 20 studies linking decreased cognitive behavior with increased chronic noise. So I know we've discussed noise quite a bit at these meetings. But, you know, the data cannot be incorrect. You know, this is being built, again, right next to daycare and in residential neighborhoods. And not only will there be the permanent plant, but the two to three years of construction noise. And now regarding this whole issue around digging, I find that and drilling, I find that a little bit strange. I mean, clearly, it'll be drilling during this project since it's a geothermal exchange plant. And, you know, just Googling it, right? I mean, the whole point is that you have to dig deep into the earth in order to accomplish and order to construct a geothermal exchange plant. So I'll let you comment on that. But, you know, again, I would love to hear how you're not going to drill deep into the earth to construct this. If this is going to be an entirely above-ground geothermal exchange plant, is that what you're saying? And if there is some form of digging and drilling involved here, then it would be great to hear comments about air pollution and the environmental impact. Because again, you know, there's a population here that cannot speak for themselves, and this can exacerbate chronic respiratory issues, induce different allergies. And, you know, again, the question of lead exposure, you know, certainly, construction workers are protected from lead exposure during construction. But, you know, what measures are being taken? If, well, I guess you'll discuss the drilling, but that seems a little bit strange that there'll be no drilling. So, yeah, so it'd be great to hear your thoughts on that.
So let me just explain that for a second, because I don't think it was clear. So the university had had three prior applications that were submitted through the municipality for geo-exchange drilling. Those applications were approved. The copies of them are on the website as well as on the, I should say, the Princeton University website. We made them available, and I think that's what people are looking at. This application this evening, before the board, what the board is voting on does not include any actual drilling. It's the building itself. The three prior approved applications, which include the drilling, did have drilling under this building. And as Ron McCoy indicated this evening, we are no longer, the university is no longer proposing the drills, the drilling right under the building, and will, you know, essentially, even though we got approval for them, will not, you know, be drilling there before the construction of the building.
But there will be drilling. There'll be digging into the earth, right? There'll be boars placed deep into the underground?
Not at the site of the building.
But those boars are being drilled now, are they not?
Yes, correct.
Work is ongoing.
Yeah, like I said, they're previously approved. So right now, the boars are being drilled under what was approved as the east campus garage. So on old parking lot 21, there's construction work going on there. And where the soccer stadium is going to be built, those sites have been disturbed. And there's current drilling going on in those locations.
So still within proximity to the residential neighborhood and the daycare? I guess what I'm asking is what risk mitigation will be taken, will occur here to ensure that there's not excess air pollution or environmental concern with this drilling?
We have to follow, again, municipal codes for dust control, and that's what we're doing. The drills, the drills after they get, obviously, through the first foot or two are in the earth and mostly in mud. But there could also be, most of the dust, if it would occur on a site, is due to vehicles moving across the site. And that's primarily what the dust control serves. And there are, on the municipal ordinance, requires the construction site to be managed in a way that prevents harmful dust from leaving the site.
Is it somehow being measured? And that, I mean, what's being done to actually look and see if that's sufficient?
I actually don't have information on that. It is a responsibility of the contractor to control the site. And if the contractor doesn't control the site, then if there's a neighbor complaint that it's not being dealt with, then we'll address it.
Okay, I mean, again, as a you-now parent, and just as a pediatrician, I would urge that before this continues, that sort of, this needs to be looked at, and, you know, some kind of assurance made that this is being monitored so that should there be a concern, you know, the children won't be affected. We don't want some kind of Netflix documentary, you know, 20 years from now about the plants and the effects it had on kids. I mean, let's try to let's try to look at all this right now.
Yeah, it's standard practice on all our construction sites, but we'll go back and make sure it's being enforced.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, Ms. Tannenbaum, before we move on to the next witness or?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lesko?
Uh, next up, we have Eleanor Hubbard. And I will promote them followed by, uh, Olga Troyan Skaya.
Hi, um, I'm Eleanor Hubbard.
Ms. Hubbard, have you spoken before? Were you sworn in?
Uh, no, I have not.
If you, if you could raise, if you could raise your, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth. Did you hear me?
Uh, I swear that the testimony I'm about to give is the truth.
Okay, if you could state your full name, spell your last name and give your address.
Uh, my name is Eleanor Hubbard. My last name is spelled H U B B A R D and I live at 580 Prospect Avenue.
You thank me.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I'm speaking also as a UNO parent. Um, I'm also, uh, a trustee on the board, although I'm not speaking on behalf, um, uh, of the board today. And I would like to register my concerns about the, um, the location of the Tiger plant in particular because of the impact of construction noise, um, on UNO children. Uh, as you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. The, you know, UNO has spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to stay open safely in this time. And part of that, uh, involves having children outside as much as possible and keeping windows open as much as possible uh, when they're inside. Um, so construction noise, uh, in the next year or so is a big deal for us. Um, construction noise has routinely been exceeding the levels determined to be safe for children by the World Health Organization. Uh, and unfortunately, it seems to be projected, uh, to go on for a long time. Uh, so I understand that, um, the geothermal bores, uh, are not, um, part of this application, um, but it was disconcerting as a, you know, parent um, to find out, um, two days ago that, uh, that permits have been approved for, uh, digging 44 really deep holes, uh, really right on the other side of the fence, um, of the playground. Um, that was very, uh, that was, that was really new to us. Um, we, uh, reached out asking for more information and we're told that, you know, it's all ready to go, but, but the university has decided not to proceed with those boards at this time. Uh, I'd just like to express that, um, as a, as a parent of a child that you now, um, it's, you know, it's, it's frightening, uh, to feel that, um, her daycare may become unusable, that you know, might have to close during, uh, due to construction impacts. And I'd like to ask that those impacts be mitigated to the greatest extent possible, um, uh, for the safety of the UNO children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lesko?
Yes, I'm moving over now Olga Troyan Skaya. Uh, and Manjul Bargava is on deck.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
And?
Hi, I think I'm also familiar to you and I have been sworn in.
Yes, ma'am, you have. Go right ahead.
All right. Thank you so much again, uh, to the board and, uh, to the university for presenting the new plan. Uh, and as you probably remember, I'm speaking as a neighbor and as a parent of two children under 10. Uh, so my five-year-old doesn't want to go outside now because of the continuous construction noise that already exists. This is right, you know, where the, we and Todd Cronin, who spoke recently, are the two closest houses. The closest building is of course the daycare, uh, so they get the priority, but we're in the next two. Um, and I'm sure this is not helping her diagnosed anxiety and this is at age five. And now in addition to my two children, of course, there is 150 more at the daycare. Uh, and of course, many more in the neighborhood. Uh, and you know, we're being told to trust the university's estimates and, uh, that, and I'm going to quote, uh, Mr. McCoy's statement from a few minutes ago. Sorry, Ron, but you know, uh, it was just so striking that I wrote it down. You said the physics of sound is simple. And with all due respect, the physics of sound in the environment is far from simple. Uh, and sound propagation is affected by many parameters, including wind, rain, landscape and many similar parameters. I'm not a sound expert. I am a data modeler and so I've, uh, you know, for fun, not at all, but you know, due to this, uh, uh, exciting exercise that I've been, uh, involved in, due to all of this, uh, have looked at quite a few papers. And believe me, uh, the many faculty, engineers and, uh, sound experts who, uh, do academic and industrial research in the physics of sound propagation would not agree that it's simple. Um, and, uh, furthermore, just out of again, today's meeting, as Mr. Keith has indicated, no sound consultant would sign under guarantee that these conveniently quieter than ambient numbers will be the ones that will actually materialize. And so I'm sure the university generated these numbers from a model. I am absolutely not implying that, you know, this was made up or I'm sure, uh, Julie Fisher and her former professionals and this was made by model. But again, I am an expert in data science and modeling. I'm a national level expert, international level expert, and as an expert, I can tell you that models are only as good as the data and the parameters that are put in them. And we've seen countless issues with numbers here, even just with the university, for example, taking very simple and supposedly basic measurements of sound during the current constructions that then now we have clear proof from the township and a police report and the university's own environmental, uh, safety office show that the numbers that in, in reality were happening were 10 to 20 decibels higher than the measurements that the university has documented on their website in the same location at the same time. And this is compared now, of course, also to the 24 sound monitors that the university was forced to install when they were found in clear violation of noise codes by the township health officer. So in terms of trust, again, um, Ron, you've just told us that the sound wall wraps essentially all the way around Tiger. I literally wrote down the quote. You.
Around the louvers, around the louvers.
You said around the Tiger facility twice in your presentation. Now exactly. I will clarify exactly. So first of all, it's not, and this is the sort of things, right? Like, and I know you're not meaning to do it this way, but this is where it's really challenging to trust, right? It's, first of all, it's around a fraction of one wall of a facility, which, you know, as you probably all saw, has four walls. And second, it's covering only half about, sorry, there's seven louvers, so I will be clear. I believe it covers four of the seven louvers. Is that correct, Ron?
That's right.
And there's absolutely no mitigation on the other side. And by the way, there's no clear side, one side that faces the neighborhood. The building is sort of, you know, on its sideways to the neighborhood. So for example, our house is actually closer in our luck to the wall that has zero mitigation. And of course, we also have the gorgeous old glass floor on top of the facility as well that has absolutely no function except aesthetics. And this has been confirmed by Mr. McCoy in a recent conversation that we've had. So I just really want to implore the board and actually really, Ron, you guys, you know, to really make due faith and basically if this truly is going to be this magical, you know, soundless facility that will be lower than ambient noise, wonderful. But then let's have guarantees that have teeth because I really, like, you know, I am ready to cry. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm becoming emotional, but you don't understand what the sound is doing with the current construction. When I think about living with lower but constant 24/7 sound in the neighborhood, I just can't imagine this, right? And I can't imagine my children dealing with this. And this was, you know, we love Princeton. This is why we live here. We, we think it's the magical town, the best place to live. And I don't know if it's going to be anymore. And so I really hope that there's actual teeth to some way of enforcing that this is going to be the sound. And I also really hope that if you're truly committed to mitigating and building a facility that really is designed in a way that is trying to mitigate this noise and minimize the noise, then why not actually cover all the louvers and why have a giant glass floor that has no function but aesthetics? So that's, that's my point. If we really believe that it's going to be so quiet, why not sign on it and put your foot down and have a real written down commitment with real way of enforcing it? Because if that's what it's going to be, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Troyan Skaya. And both you and, um, and Ms. Hubbard have raised the, um, issue of ongoing construction noise, which is obviously separate from the issue of the noise generated. Um, so, uh, so I, I'm, I'm not asking you to clarify that. I'm just sort of putting it out there. I, I heard Mr. McCoy say that, you know, that all four sides of the trans, transformers would be, would be surrounded by the noise shield. But I, I, I was pretty clear, I hope others on the board were as well, about the, the wall only being on that limited, um, section of the, of the Tiger facility. But so in an earlier meeting, the university sort of laid out what, um, the community and the neighbors should expect in the way of timing for how, how much longer the drilling would take, uh, what your estimate is for when that will be finished. Um, so I'd like for you to repeat that and I'd, as, as well as the overall construction timeframe. And I'd also like to ask if you are doing any, um, strategic thinking about whether, um, certain bores are being drilled in certain areas on certain days based on when the children are or are not in the, um, uh, in the daycare facility. I don't know whether that's a question for.
Man, I'm trying to turn off my video because I'm having, I'm having, I've had a maybe a spotty connection or maybe somewhere in the system is a spotted connection. So I don't know if I heard all of that. I could, I can respond to the, and then I'll ask you to repeat the second part of the question. But with regard to the billing, uh, the drilling will go on through October of this year of 2021. Um, after that, um, uh, if the, with, with the permits, if permits are granted for the Tiger facility, Tiger facility is expected to, uh, be under construction until April of 2023. Uh, that construction period obviously has different phases. Um, you know, there's a phase where the foundations are poured, steel goes up, the wall goes on and then, and then construction turns to the inside. So, um, you know, it'll have different phases and we've, we've, uh, one of the things we talked to, to the neighbors about was to, um, sort of, um, launch a very proactive communication process so that we could explain to the neighbors when certain activities and construction would be happening, what the nature of those activities might be, um, how long they might last, how long they would last. And, uh, so we just sort of ramp up our, that kind of communication phase for, for the construction duration. We've said many times that when the UNO facility was built, um, that we, we didn't have complaints, um, from the neighborhood for the construction of that. Um, I don't imagine for a minute that that won't be, that would happen here, uh, because I think everybody's, um, um, attuned to noise now in the environment of this, of this application. But we will do everything we can to continue to, to mitigate that, that construction noise. And I, I may have missed the second part of your question because my internet connection was spotty.
I think the second part was asking whether or not, um, I know there are hundreds of bores to be drilled and I'm wondering whether the location of the drilling, um, it, whether there's any consideration being given to doing some of that in certain places closer to neighbors or to you now during hours or days when kids will not be in the facility or, you know, what, what is determining where the drilling is happening on, on any given day or week?
I'm afraid that is, um, uh, I don't have the, I don't have the detailed information of the drilling schedule and the, and the locations of the drills. They move around to the, to the different parts of the sites. I would say though, that, um, in those graphs I showed you earlier, that there were, um, three out of the four workdays had the, had the noise lower than 55 DBA at the south fence of the playground. And if we're talking about the WHO standard of 55 DBA in the playground, only one of those four days, um, showed it higher than that. So, but that varies obviously depending on where the, where the drill works are. They're all on the west side of Fitz Randolph and, um, uh, but we can, we can come back and tell you where they are. We can't, we cannot drill on the weekends. We drill during the weekdays and, um, um, we are, we're committed to getting the drilling, drilling done as quickly as possible rather than, rather than drawing it all out.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Wilson, may I speak one more time?
Um, yes, if you can make it quick, we want to try to.
Just a quick, just because, uh, I actually have access to that sound information since one of the sound monitors is on my, uh, balcony and I actually see all of the, those graphs. And while, uh, and maybe it's a coincidence, but coincidentally leading to the planning board presentation, it's been quieter. It has, and Todd, you can ask Todd Cronin to testify, we can also give you access to the screenshots that I've taken for weeks. It is almost never below 60. It is usually right around 65. We quite often have over 75, but usually not for 10 minutes, not long enough to call the police. But, uh, it is, that is not correct that it's, uh, that quiet. And UNO is usually louder, UNO playground is usually louder than we are, uh, they're a little bit closer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Lesko?
Yes, I'm moving over Manjul Bargava.
Bargava, I think.
Followed by Carolina Menjoe.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Mr. Bargava, you've been, um, sworn before, have you not?
I think so. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes, you have.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I just want to thank the board for listening to us neighbors' concerns. And, and also thank the university that reached out to us this past week to, to talk to them. And thank you, Ron. Um, and thank you for the modifications that, that have been made in the design of the facility, uh, to potentially reduce noise. And I thank you for that. So I'd say we, uh, we did meet with the, with, uh, university representatives, including Ron, and we're very grateful for that. We're just a few of us representing about 50 plus neighbors and, and so we're speaking on their behalf. Uh, and I just want to make clear, we're very happy that, uh, the university's reached out, uh, finally, and that's really nice. Uh, but I also want to make clear that we did not leave terribly happy or convinced. And I just want to explain some of the reasons why, uh, based on the conversations with the neighbors, uh, quickly. The first, first of course is, we've been, uh, facing this truly unbearable construction for, for months, uh, nearly a year now or more. Uh, we're a community of scholars. We're having trouble working. We, the kids can't go outside. There's dust kicking up everywhere. It's extremely noisy. Noise levels do go well above what, uh, we were told they would. And that's what has created some of the lack of trust in the, in the community. Uh, and so we're very afraid of this new construction, uh, that's going to be happening now. That's even closer now, right on our block where we live and right next to, um, the nursery that our, our kids, um, spend their, their day at. Uh, so that is a, that is a huge concern, uh, for the next two, uh, two years, uh, two plus years, uh, that we're going to be facing air pollution, noise pollution, all of us that have respiratory problems like myself and any of the kids, of course, that do, will have to face, uh, this dust and an entire generation of UNO kids will have to face this. And, and what will, how will, how will we deal with? Uh, after that, there will be this permanent facility that's right on the same block where we live and right next to, um, the nursery permanently. That is a big concern, an industrial sized energy facility that's right on the same block where we live and where our kids go to school. And the concern around all of this is that there are, there have not been any written guarantees about what, what the state of affairs will be during the construction, uh, which sounds like it's going to be worse than what we've already been facing possibly and for another two plus years. And then after that, uh, this permanent, uh, this permanent facility that will be there, there are no written guarantees of what we may be facing, living on that same block. And what the kids will be facing, being right next to it. So that's the, that's the first big concern. But the second, the second concern that really came up in the discussion with the neighbors, which we, we really feel has not been addressed, uh, fully is, is why, why are we building it there? And that is, that is really the, the crux of the issue because we have, uh, we have seen the plans for years where it was going to be next to Denenzio. And we, we always ask about that and we never, we never get an answer that, that made the residents happy. And the answer, of course, was that. And the answer of course was that there's a high priority, you know, Denunzio where it was going to be is considered a high priority area where someday some hypothetical facility may be made at some hypothetical time. And residents were not terribly happy about that because well, what is the implication that the block and we live, the block on which we live? And, and, and the plot that's right next to the nursery school is considered low priority. Are we all low priority as neighbors who where you're putting this right in between us all? We all contend that we're not low priority. We are the scholars of, of the university that need quiet in order to work. We are, we are patients who have respiratory problems, who do not need more, you know, more dust flying in our direction. We are children who are going to be right next to this facility who have, who have cognitive development needs, who have, who also have health problems. We contend that we're, we're, we're very high priority. And there is a perfectly good place to put it where it was originally planned to put it. And that's the question the neighbors are asking, why can't, we have a good place to put it? Let's put it there. There, there are no people sleeping. There, there are no children playing. There, there are no scholars and libraries that people are thinking. The university is the place where we need quiet in order to work. That is an area of the university where, where there aren't libraries, where there aren't residences, where there aren't children playing. It solves all our problems. We won't have any neighbors complaining. We won't have any children suffering if, if it's just placed there. And we, we really plead to the university and plead to the planning board to please encourage the movement back where it was, the neighbors and parents had never complained about that being there. So our solution would be all these initiatives to do sound mitigation and pollution mitigation are great on this current facility. We applied you for that and we think you should do that and just at the Denunzio location, not in the middle of our, of our residential neighborhood and next to our nursery. So that is our, that is our plea. Thank you again for, for, for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manjul. If I, if I can just respond a little bit again, I think this captures a collection of comments, but again, to remember that we, we recognize the construction noise is disturbing. All construction sites carry construction noise. We have, we are doing as much if not more than most construction sites to deal with construction noise. But for the application that's part of the conversation here, I, I would just say that I, I think that the, the premise of the question is that the facility would have an adverse effect on the neighborhood and therefore why put it there when you could put it somewhere else? The reality, what we've shown is that it does not have an adverse effect. So we're not trading, we're not making a choice to put something that would adversely affect the neighborhood in the neighborhood. We've demonstrated that the facility will have significantly below, lower than, lower than ambient noise levels. And so, so the premise just doesn't hold. It's not an adverse affecting of the character of the neighborhood. And it's in fact a very sort of suitable locate, suitable location for the building and a suitable context for the building because it is so quiet. The rest of the issues are really, I go back to the campus plan, which we said was a framework. It was not a specific proposal and we said in that campus plan that, that things will emerge. And, and so this is, we, we could, we've probably made four or five different changes in the campus plan throughout all, all of our facilities as we've launched them. It's a framework. It's a loose framework.
Okay, thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. Bargava. Mr. Lesko?
Yes. Carolina Manjone is up next, followed by M. Eileen Long. And those are the last hands I see out of the 64 attendees currently on.
Hi.
Have you testified before?
I haven't before, and it's actually Carolina Mangone.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Mangone. Mr. Mueller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony is about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Carolina Mangone. It's spelled M.A.N.G.O.N.E. I'm an assistant professor in the Department of Art and Archaeology at the university. And I'm also a resident of the Dean Matty complex, which is very close to the site in question. I've been present at virtually and listened to all of these meetings and I, I remain uneasy. I am reassured a bit by the changes that have been made. And I thank Ron McCoy and his team for doing those and acknowledge those changes. But I'm astonished that the $64,000 question, to quote Joe Keefe's Blythe response, I think it was to Todd Cronin, is what to do after the plant is built and it's discovered that it exceeds the noise limits? This should not be in question at all. To put it into question, as Joe Keefe did, is to constitute an egregious breach of the relationship between the community and the university. Accountability is not optional. It's not optional for me as a professor or any of my colleagues. And I suspect it's not optional for any of you as professionals. And so I, I guess what I really want to understand is that are you legally bound to your estimates? Do you expect to operate with impunity? And if not, can we then guarantee or get a guarantee from you that you will act with accountability if the noise level rises beyond the estimates and the limits that are expected?
Well, if it exceeds,
Answered this over, over again. I don't think we need to answer it again. I mean, the university takes the issue very seriously and has an open mind and it continues to do things and volunteer things well beyond expectations. Whether we before the approvals, during the approvals or after the approvals. Even the things like the sound monitoring that we placed in houses were all voluntarily put there. This is to help us get to the issues. Construction noise is, you know, is loud and we are currently looking at that and relooking at it. And we're going to continue to do that. But when it comes down to, you know, the same question over and over again, I, I think we've answered it and if.
I'm, I'm sorry if I'm not appeased by your response because your response is addressing the current terms and not the situation after the building. And so many of the questions have been directed to the ramifications of the, the estimates potentially being wrong. Because it seems as though there's, there's reluctance to stand by those estimates in the long term, or at least to be accountable to them if they should be wrong.
Yeah, there's, there's a state code and there's a nuisance code by ordinance and we're going to comply with this. And that's the law. That's what we have to comply with. It's pretty simple.
Well, there's an open question and I assume that the board is going to want to address it in terms of imposing a condition which requires a post-construction noise study when the facility is fully operational. And whether the board wants to impose a condition requiring remediation if the projected noise levels are exceeded. I think, I think the board has, I, I think.
Jerry, that's, that's not.
I think, I think, I think the board, I think in my professional opinion, the board has the power to do that, to impose such a condition.
If it was not a permitted use maybe, or if it was a use outside of, you know, if, if it cannot adopt by ordinance, different standards than what's in the state code, it can't be applied to a permitted use that doesn't have any variances. It fully conforms in all ways. There's no way to go beyond what's allowed. You know, if a road is 55 miles an hour, that's the speed limit. If there's no basis for the, or ability to put either through ordinance, which I think you can agree on that, or by condition on a use that is fully compliant with the code.
Well, I mean, you and I have different, different opinions on that. I, I don't agree with you. And I think the board can impose reasonable conditions and particularly given the potential impact and the, the basically the insistence.
Jerry, there's no.
If I may, if I may finish. And the university's emphasis repeatedly that one of the reasons they are not considering relocation is because they are absolutely satisfied that they will, they will satisfy the projections and not exceed them. I think, given that, I think the board has, has, has powers to impose reasonable conditions and there's case law that basically supports that. And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be in a variant situation.
But this is a permitted use.
I understand.
Be an issue if the zoning did not allow this use. We've heard testimony that we will comply with the nuisance code and will comply with the state code. The modeling shows it substantially less. That's all that an applicant is required to do. If, if, if you are imposing stricter standards, it doesn't make any sense because anybody next door, the neighborhood, the ambient sound could change tomorrow. This is not a reasonable approach, nor is it allowed by ordinance or by.
That's, that's your opinion and I, we don't have to talk about it anymore. But I think you can impose a condition based upon the representations by the, by the applicant. But as I say, you, you and I have different points of view.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll no doubt come back to this question. I see your, your hand, Ms. Mangone, and also one of our board members raised her hand with a question or comment. But do you, do you have any other questions for?
I didn't. I'm, I'm grateful for Mr. Mueller's question because it calls into relief just like a building that it exceeds limits or just like a speed limit that has exceeded. There are legal ramifications if you exceed that limit after the fact. So, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
Let me just reserve one issue, Jerry. I didn't weigh in frankly because I agreed with you anyway, but I didn't want to burden the record more than I do normally. But I did want to note, we of course take the position it is not a permitted use. So I want to make sure that was left stated right now, but we'll come back.
And you, and you're going to argue that at some point.
Yeah, that'd be legal argument.
Ms. Sax, did you have a, a question or comment?
Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to say, you know, to Mr. DeGruzia that it's just not helpful to keep saying that you've answered the question because you, the question that is being asked is would the university remedy the situation? And, and every time the question is put to the university, you interrupt which, and, and, and prevent your client from answering. And so that doesn't help to build trust. And I guess my question is, I, I wanted to ask Mr. Cronin and, and the, the questioner before him and now Ms. Mangone. You know, so what is, and I'm not clear on what would be the situation in which a remedy would be needed? Because you know, what, what, what are we talking specifically? Because you know, there's, there's a, there's a range of numbers that have been, been given and I, and I, you know, I, I wasn't clear also what each of you had in mind.
I will defer to Todd Cronin because I may or may not be a long-term resident of this area. So I'll, I'll defer to Todd.
Justin, can we bring him back?
I mean, we can, I, I'm sure we'll discuss this further. We could, but it, it just, we keep going round and round in circles on this one issue. And I just, the, the question hasn't been answered. And so, you know, the, the university, according to Mr. DeGruzia, is not willing to consider this, but we're not even sure what this is. So, so I think we, we need to determine before we continue going round and round because the, the same question is, is coming up from many of the questioners. And, and so I think the board at a certain point will want to know what specifically the trigger point whereby there might be a remedy applied is, what is that trigger point? And is there some consensus among the questioners about what that trigger point might be? And if so, you know, then is, is that also, you know, would the university be willing to consider that the trigger point?
I can, I can say very briefly, I mean, I'd want to consult, I have a friend who teaches HVAC at Princeton, but my sense is of course, they projected 30 to 35. I mean, there will be some wiggle room here, right? So if it were to reach 38, let's say, that would be of course, I think, fine. But if it gets over 38 consistently, if it's, then it's going over the ambient level. And so it's, it's, it's louder than they are suggesting would be, that that's when they would come in and, and, and make it quieter. So I mean, it'd be whatever with a reasonable, I mean, 30, 38, 39, 40, that would be, that they'd come in and, and, and fix it. But I, I would understand there are fluctuations, of course. So wind and other things can, can change it. But if it get, if it's consistently over, I would say 38, then they would come in and, and fix it. I'm not sure why that, why this is such a controversial issue, but.
It's, it's a very controversial issue because there's a law and it applies to everyone. And you're asking us to deviate from the law.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm a lawyer and I do disagree with you because there's a planning board. I assume that, I assume, going back again, the purpose of the planning board, I assume, and why there is comment from the neighbors is we're not all lawyers. We're, we're, we're trying to imagine what is a kind of, I don't know what the wording is, but a humane response that it fits into the character of the neighborhood. I'm sure this is part of the planning board's purview is that new construction fits into the character of the neighborhood. And it's not just stamping the, the law. So I'm assuming there is, and if they make a projection, it's not just, you know, and if it doesn't meet it, who cares? If they make a projection that presumably that matters. Wouldn't you agree with that, Chris?
I agree that when you take a look at it a whole, you could go around the neighborhood and say your air conditioning is at 65, that you now kids are at 85 decibels, that you now air conditioning is, is higher than what's being predicted. What I'm saying is that there is a standard, it's uniform and it's required in terms of health and safety. And the trigger is 50 DBA at night. And our models are predicting substantially lower. The applicant here doesn't have to do all the, the, the extra they're doing in terms of the walls. They don't have to do that. And because they're doing extra and showing and making an investment, you're penalizing them by, by saying, oh, that is now the new standard. Everyone else has to apply to the old standard, but this new standard applies to you because you're willing to go beyond what's required. You're willing to go not, not well below the state, which it was originally, but now we're making a further investment and now we're, you're talking about even lower. There's no ambient noise consideration because it is not part of what's required. There's a nuisance code. And if we don't meet the nuisance code, we will, if we violate that, we would respond. Now, it's just the law. But I also said that the university is very responsive. They have been and they always go beyond. If there were issues and concerns raised, I'm sure that the university will put together. And excuse me, Bruce, I'm speaking right now.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Please, Mr. Affrin, please let Mr. DeGruzia finish his point and then, and then you can make yours, okay? I really do want just one person talking at a time.
So, so this is.
Sum it up, Mr. DeGruzia.
So, so really, my point here is that we are looking at a use and, and everyone is mischaracterizing the information and talking about some industrial use. It is not that, an energy, it is not burning any fuels. It's not producing energy. It's a storage building that uses temperatures from the earth. We've shown through testimony how it is far below impacts. Ron explained that this location is partly chosen because it doesn't have the intensity of trips and traffic and people going in and out and noise like other uses, athletic uses or. And people going in and out and noise like other uses, athletic uses or academic buildings would have in this location. It is chosen, but, but that part is always left out. You know, when he answers it, they don't listen to the full answer. This is a very good location for such a quiet, low-intensity use. It fits and conforms, it's below, well below the, the zoning standards. And when it comes to noise, it is going so far beyond what's reasonable. That now the condition of approval, which goes on permanently throughout time. Is now being considered based on not the what's required. But based on all of the extra good that they're doing and trying to do to make it even better than what's proposed.
Mr. DeGruzia, since I, I asked the question, I, none of that was at all, that was not what we were asking here. We are not talking about the use or the, the zoning or any of that. The only thing we are discussing here is what would be the noise trigger point after the structure is built. Which would enable the neighbors to basically say to the university, we need a remedy. That's, that's the only thing, and you went into a long discussion and all sorts of things, which is not what we, we, there's a specific question. That the neighbors keep asking and it's very narrow. It has nothing to do with what you were just talking about. And we, and they're, they're, you know, we're trying to figure out whether there would be. And I understand your point about, you know, not wanting to penalize the university for bringing the, 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 the projections even lower. But I, I guess I want to just ask our professionals now, you know, because there seems to be some haziness in terms of the, our law. But, you know, can, is it possible for us to come up with something?
Can I just suggest, from a procedural standpoint, this should be part of board deliberations and not part of the public hearing?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And I, I mean, I'm glad the question is out there. I think we understand the contours of it. We still have one more person who wants to speak and Mr. Afrin, who I asked to wait his turn. I want to give you, Bruce, a chance to say something quickly before we bring in what I think will be our last public commenter. Although I'm, I'm not certain of that, do you?
Actually, we have several more. We have Eileen Long and Mr. Chazelle have their hands raised.
I believe Mr. Chazelle is represented by Bruce Afrin, so.
No, no, he's not.
He's, he's not.
Okay.
Louise, I was just going to, my only point of interjecting, I, I do think Chris doesn't need to argue the legal issues all the time at this phase. But I, I don't think it's right for the council at this evidentiary part to talk about how honorable the university is. You know, these kinds of remarks really shouldn't be made at this point. They probably shouldn't be made at all, frankly. They're not evidence.
To represent his client. Let, let's hear from Ms. Long, is she next?
Well, Louise, just a moment, please. I, I really want to make a point that Mr. DeGruzia has been going beyond legal argument and characterizing facts. And that's what I'm objecting to in part. We just had a description of the nature of the functionality of the project from a lawyer during an evidence phase in response to a witness. Now, that's really going too far, and I'm raising an objection to that manner of proceeding, that's all.
Noted. Thanks. Ms. Long. We're not hearing you, though.
You, you're muted.
Unmute yourself, there you go.
Ms. Long, have you testified previously?
No.
But if you could, I'm going to swear again, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So swan or firm, please state your phone name, spell your last name and give your address.
My name is Eileen Long, last name is spelled L O N G. I'm a resident at seventy Hartley Avenue, so I'm a neighbor.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to make some of you very happy because, although I'm very pleased with the updated Tiger design specs. And all the efforts the university has put forth to work with us as neighbors. I still have a question and it relates to what was just discussed. So I'll, I'll ask it this way, why not commit to the sound levels lower than the state code? Unfortunately, it sounds like this evening that the numbers, if the numbers prove different later on. That the university will only commit to the state codes anyway. I, I think that's what I'm hearing. So my question is, am I understanding that correctly? That the bottom line is, based on all your updated specs, lowering the sound problem for later. Which we're all happy about, or most of us are happy about, that if that doesn't happen. Will you only go with the state codes anyway, regardless of what you're telling us now? The new specs will complete. I'm not sure who that question should go to, but.
I, I'm not either. I don't think that we know the answer to that question yet. I, I'm not sure, I, I obviously would not answer on behalf of, of the applicant. I'm just not sure we want to try to force the applicant to answer the question at this point in time, Mr. Mueller.
Well, I thought Mr. DeGruzia had made it very clear that that's the case.
Yeah, that we're held to the same standard as everybody else. And that it's a nuisance code under the Princeton ordinance. And we will, that, once it's built and there's any type of noise or sound from this or the next facility or everything. Or the neighbors, it all is viewed under that nuisance code. Or if you are looking at a specific decibel reading, and let's just take the nighttime one, it's fifty dBA at night on the property line. That is the requirement and that's what we are required to do by law. And that's what would be the trigger. Now, the applicant here has gone well, well beyond, not only with internal.
We, we, we understand that, Chris.
But that's the trigger.
So there is a trigger number then, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That they, so that answers my question. You're only going to go with the state law regardless of what you've outlined, that the remediation.
It's going to be substantially lower as.
We, we, we understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Can I suggest that there was, there is another trigger and I'll go back to the comments I made earlier, which is a trigger of trust. We have done so much, we've responded to so many concerns. And I would like to ask the neighbors to trust us that if, if, if we're not able to deliver what we're designing, we will monitor the construction. We will test the construction. And if we're not able to deliver, we will, we will, we will build on that trust and, and work for a solution.
Oh, wait, I, I'd like to ask something here. We're getting two positions now, it seems.
No, I'm not agreeing, I'm still, I'm, I'm supporting Christopher's decision that, the, the recommendation that we will, we will, we will not agree in writing to that. But I'm just, I'm just taking out of a legal side and say, trust us, we are, we are, we are all part of the university. All the people that have spoken here tonight are primarily our faculty. And, and the parents of the children of our fac, the children of the parents of our faculty. So we, we want to, want to honor that trust and we're asking you to work with us. Rather than make it, rather than make it a legal requirement.
We all appreciate that, I think, but I guess because nobody's willing to really answer the questions, it makes people uneasy.
Well, they have answered the question.
One quick question to Mr. McCoy.
Yes.
Yes.
I, you know, since you're spending quite a bit of money on this structure. And it's projected to bring, I mean, a substantial amount of money, I would imagine. And it's projected to bring the noise levels down quite a bit. Is there not some guarantee by the company that is, you know, that has recommended this structure? That if it didn't, in, that if it didn't perform in the way that it is. You know, is there not some guarantee at that level? It seems like the university, having spent this much money on a structure like that, that's supposed to, to perform at a certain. To, to, you know, bring the noise levels down, that would the university have a case against that vendor or that company?
Typically, yes, if a company fails to meet the specifications and if the specifications are correctly drawn. That we, we can hold them responsible and liable to meet, to meet the, what was expected to be delivered. There's a, a world full of litigation about person, you know, back and forth about, about those things. I can't predict the, the outcome of that. But yes, we, we would expect that the specifications be met by the construction company. And we'd expect, and we'd expect the specifications to be correctly designed to meet our, to meet what we're, what we're committing to.
May I ask a question? Jim Purcell.
Yes.
News engineer.
Yep.
Ron, will you be doing commissioning on this when it's finished?
Yes.
Will you have within your commissioning specifications?
And could you explain what, what commissioning?
Commission, commissioning is testing out all of the equipment, all of the elements of the construction to make sure that they have been constructed in accordance with the specifications.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm assuming that you will run through a commissioning process and you will determine whether or not. The sound mitigation measures have been constructed according to specifications, is that correct?
I, I can't say if those are in the commissioning contract right now, but we certainly would agree to that as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
I'd like to clarify for Ms. Sax and other members of the board and the public who's listening. When an acoustical consultant designs a wall, they have an expectation of the attenuation that that wall will create at a certain observer in the distance. Such as the residents of concern here. But the provider of the wall is not guaranteeing that the wall will attenuate X decibels. The reason is, the geometry of the project controls whether the wall attenuates X decibels or more than X or less than X. That depends on how tall the wall is, is it carried from greater, is there a gap at the bottom? How far does it go to the left and the right? Is it closed on the edges? All those sorts of things, the manufacturer doesn't take responsibility for. That's a design team responsibility. So that really comes back to the same issue we've been discussing for most of the night, which is what the board wants to set as a condition of approval. Or even if the condition of approval is an appropriate thing, since the attorneys disagree on it.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. And, and thank you, Jim Purcell, also for raising that question and Mr. McCoy for agreeing to that as a potential condition for approval. Is there one more person waiting to, waiting to speak, Justin?
There are two hands raised right now. One is just the name Chazelle, and then the second is Andrew Watzke, who previously spoke.
Okay, well, let's hear from, I think it's Mr. Chazelle, but.
I'll promote them to panelists now.
I'm trying to power through the speakers before taking a quick break. But I, I would like, even though we have a hard stop, I'd like very much to take a, a quick break. For a breath and run up and down the stairs or something and then come back and finish up. Mr., Mr. Chazelle.
Okay, thank you. I have a very quick, uh, quick, simple question. In the current plan that was shown on January seventh to the board. There, there are forty-four holes, four holes, eight hundred fifty feet. To be drilled right next to the UNow facility, like right next to it. It seems that these, these drilling has been put on hold, is that true? But it has not been canceled. I just wanted an answer to this question.
We are not going to drill those holes now.
Now, but later you will.
I, I, I can't commit to what we will do in the future, I'm just saying.
So it has not been canceled, that's all I need to know. It has not been canceled, it's been put on hold. And any day in the future, the kids could have forty-four, eight hundred fifty feet. Deep holes being drilled right outside, okay, that's just what I want to know, thank you. I'm done.
Chazelle, can you tell me what your first name is, just for my notes and for the minutes?
My name is Bernard.
Bernard, right, I'm sorry, I should have remembered that. Thank you. No, I, I know we have a letter and, yeah.
Correspondence.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin?
Yes, we have one more hand and that's Andrew Watzke.
Okay.
I will move them over now.
So Watzke, you're still muted.
Thank you for letting.
Do you have a different point or question to make?
This will be, this will be twenty seconds. I, I only want to make the point that, that we got one set of numbers to get through the board approval. Which is the thirty to thirty-five set of numbers. But for the future, the only thing the university is willing to commit to are the state numbers. So I want the board to take into account the difference between what they are proposing as the present set of numbers to get approval. And what they are promising or what they are willing to adhere to in the future. And that disjuncture is, I think, what's causing a lot of, a lot of upset on the part of the, the neighborhood community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trust lives in that disjuncture.
Well, I, I would like to think that that's where we need to build it.
Right. Okay, so.
Madam Vice Chair, it's ten o'clock, did you want to take five or ten minutes?
Yeah, let's, let's take five minutes. And then we'll regroup and talk about what happens in the last fifty minutes of the meeting, okay?
Okay, ten oh five.
Yep, thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, are you back and Mr. Quinn?
I am here.
Great. Ms. Sax and Mr. Quinn, let's see, do we have a form, like one, two, not. Here's Tim.
Well, we want to make sure everybody's back because.
Yeah.
We're going to have to, you know, if they miss part, even if it's just a little bit, if they miss.
Okay, I think that, I think we have everybody now.
We have to formally close the public portion. I don't think we did that.
Oh, thank you, no, we, I did not, I did not.
Well, does Mr. Afrin's presentation count as public?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and, and that is what we are headed into right now, is that correct, Mr. Mueller?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Afrin, what? How, how will you ask us to spend the, you know, the next fifty-five minutes of our lives?
I prefer to ask you to all go watch a movie or have a cup of coffee or something. It's getting a little later than I'd like. It puts me in a tough spot because everyone's worked a long day and now we're first starting cross-examination. It's nobody's fault, but it always happens this way. I would really prefer just to start at the beginning of a meeting and just finish it when everyone's much more awake and alert. Because it's almost a little unfair to the objectors' position, you know, to start all this when people probably have had enough for the day. So that's one thing. The other thing is a lot of new information was presented and frankly, some of it I can't examine on. For example, the new sound figures on the graph. I received them, I'm not criticizing, I received them from Mr. DeGruzia Tuesday night. So really, there's been no testimony before that. So really, a lot of this, we can't cross on today anyway. So I can do some background questions, of course, and use the time to get some things done. But I really can't do the bulk of it tonight.
Okay, is there a, one part of your work that you would like to present tonight? Mr. Mueller earlier asked about the question of jurisdiction, is that a separate conversation than? conversation than?
Yeah, it's really merged into the merits because.
Okay, okay. Then it's not. It's not something we separate out.
Right.
Okay.
So I could do some of this now and we could begin. You know, we're not going to get too far, but we can do some of it. I don't want to waste the time either, so I try to use it.
Well, so it sounds as if we'll for certain be going. You will need more time than we have tonight. And so so that we're not doing this at the very last minute, can we discuss what meeting we will continue this to?
If I can.
To do that now?
I've been looking at the calendar and we have many applications that we have been shuffling and that are that are being scheduled because of the timeline before us. So I really have no openings or a regular meeting date for many months.
Many months. How can you?
I could do it down if you need.
We talking May or June?
Yes. Probably the earliest I could do it, we have the E S S E A S project for May sixth. And I don't know if you want to join it on top of that because that time's out. J M Ohan is something that we have been putting off. That time's out, but we could probably tack it on to that meeting. That's on the twentieth.
Carrie, is that the only item on the on the agenda?
For May twentieth, yes.
We couldn't have a special meeting. I feel like it's really disruptive to hear all of this to be, you know, there's some complicated numerical issues here. And you know, and the neighbors are, you know, living in a it's it's a very anxious state to and I'm sorry, Bruce, I'm not trying to characterize anyone's state, but I let's just say that I think it's difficult to.
You know.
It wasn't muted.
Mia, you can do that. The witness can't.
I act just preemptively. So I just I really feel like waiting that long is it's stressful. The university wants has it's just stressful for all of us. I would like to strongly urge that we try to have a special meeting sooner.
I agree wholeheartedly with the councilwoman.
Thank you, Tim.
And Carrie, when does this application time out?
This application, it's on the agenda. They gave us an extension of time.
It's the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
Of February.
Yes.
Correct.
Carrie, what do we?
Okay, so I'll just give you an idea of our next meeting. We're looking at the university art museum. That's on the fourth.
So maybe they might want to push the start of that off so that we could continue this on the fourth.
Could we ask that of the university? Because most of our backlog is university applications.
I can't respond to that off the cuff. I mean, there's a lot of timing involved with all the projects. Is there? Is there another date in that month that we could possibly schedule a special meeting?
Yeah, I think we would. We would welcome a special meeting so that we don't disrupt the overall calendar.
March eleventh.
On the well, the eleventh is open, but Sprab is meeting on the tenth, and we have to make sure that we, you know, our staff members are available for two evening meetings in a row.
Can we ask our staff members if they're available?
Every week. We're ready.
Yeah, thank you, Derek.
Yeah, that's not unusual.
Yeah, that's pretty.
I think maybe a tentative date which we can confirm, well, or maybe we can confirm it tonight, a special meeting of on March eleventh. Are members of the board available that evening? I see some nodding heads. Anybody?
I don't think anyone's going to Cancun.
Can I can I suggest? Can I suggest that if the university is able to express preference with their gather carry this application to the was it the fourth? Or the third and then off the art museum to the eleventh? Or would they rather leave the art museum where it is? Carry this to the eleventh.
Good question.
I believe they're doing a notice right now for the art museum, so I don't know if that has been.
The the art museum notice has already gone out.
So that their notice timing.
Okay. Okay, well, Carrie will confirm this with an email and of course Zoom invitations, but we'll assume that this application will be continued to March eleventh. Special meeting on March eleventh that will begin at seven thirty P M. Will there be a notice of that meeting? Does there need?
No, not if we're continuing it tonight. They don't need to do a further notice.
Okay, and there will not be any other items on the agenda?
I'll make sure of that. Other than minutes.
Possibly minutes or something?
Right. I'm working on minutes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So it's my understanding we're still going to use the rest of the hour that we have tonight to get through as much as possible. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll announce that officially because we'll need a date certain and a time for purposes of just carrying it.
And we can. We can do that now because we know we're not going to be finished.
We also need the university to agree to an extension of time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I assume that's not a that's not an issue, Christopher.
The March, the March eleventh?
Yes.
That's not going to be an issue.
Okay, and just for members of the public, as you've heard, we're going to go through some some tonight, some of Mr. Afrin's course examination. The we're not going to be finished clearly. The meeting will be carried to the eleventh of March. There'll be no further notice.
Okay. Mr. Afrin.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to ask Mr. Keith some background questions if I can. Miss Keith here.
I'm sorry, who?
You, Mr. Keith, you.
That's me. Okay, you're a little faint there. Go ahead.
Now, you wrote a report. Was it your report dated March fourth twenty twenty? Yes. November fourth twenty twenty.
I was gonna say that sounds way too early.
November four twenty twenty.
Just want to pull up my file here and confirm the date. Yes.
Thank you. So what I'd like to ask you is, could you define what you understood your retention purpose was?
Yeah, so first of all, I want to clarify that this this report was really a a what it amounted to is a list of further information we needed from the applicant in order to carry out the actual review. So my understanding of our role here is to act as an independent consultant to the municipality of Princeton Planning Board to help them understand acoustical issues, to help them understand the criteria that are appropriate for this project and to carry out a review, basically a a high level spot check of the applicant's acoustical consultants analysis to determine whether or not we agree with it, whether or not we find that it is reasonable and whether or not we think the conclusions being presented are accurate.
Now, did you actually issue an actual report aside from this list of items of information that you needed?
No, nothing on letterhead. Our follow-up findings subsequent to this four November report were issued to James Purcell by email and were read into the record at the previous meeting.
Now, that was in response to a change in the plan that was discussed at the last meeting. Is that correct?
So we carried out two email, excuse me, we carried out two reviews of Ms. Fisher's acoustical report. Neither conclusion was different on our behalf. We found that there was no substantial change between the two. Does that answer your question?
Well, when you say no substantial change, what do you mean by that?
Okay, so just let me pull up the email I sent to Mr. Purcell, so I can expound upon that a little bit.
And could you state the dates of any of the emails you're referring to?
Apparently. Okay, so I have an email from January fourth twenty twenty-one and an email from November thirtieth twenty twenty. So the November thirtieth twenty twenty email stated that we reviewed the applicant's acoustical report based on the information they provided about sound sources. So they they provided detailed information about the models of pumps and chillers or heat pumps and exhaust fans on the roof of what the specific acoustical louvers are and things like that, along with the frequency specific manufacturers information on each of those pieces of equipment. And we built our own rudimentary acoustical model of the site and its sound propagation to the surroundings. And what we concluded was because of the specified acoustical louver. And since the generator is significantly shielded by the tanks, we find that the transformers are the most significant noise source and we project sound emissions at the applicant's locations identified as two and four of about forty-five to forty-eight d B A below the regulatory limit for New Jersey and about the same as the measured average sound levels presented in the applicant's report. And then our concluding statement was we find that the applicant's acoustical analysis is accurate.
Do you have any independent sources of information as to the frequency decibel emissions and other related information except what the applicant provided to?
I think there's a contradictory statement built into that question that the sources provided by the applicant are independent because they don't come from the applicant's information. They come from the manufacturers of the equipment.
Well, who supplied that information to you?
The applicant provided the information.
My question is, aside from the information you've had from the applicant, we'll strike that. What type of information in terms of descriptive description of what you receive was?
So the.
Hang on one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Intensity of decibel levels. Describe the categories of information about these machines that you received.
Great. So we're looking at two things when we're looking to determine sound data for a source. First is what is the device, right? So we're looking at the mechanical plans that show, hey, we're putting a pump here, we're putting a chiller here, we're putting a fan on the roof here. We look for those on the plan drawings to see where they are, and then we look for them on the schedule, and the schedule shows how big the fan is, what model it is, how much air it's moving, how many horsepower the motor is and things like that. From there, that's how we developed our four November twenty twenty report that says we need further information on the following information. When we receive the information from the manufacturer, it comes in the form of what we call an equipment cut where the manufacturer says, hey, this is the selection for, you know, pump one, for example, and it has octave end sound power levels, and it also has operating parameters. So it'll say this is a five hundred horsepower pump, but this is a two hundred fifty horsepower pump. Where this is this capacity chiller and we make sure that the selection, that, excuse me, the parameters given on that equipment cut match the selection given in the equipment schedule so that we know the sound data are being provided for the actual equipment that is being specified for the project.
When you say this comes from the manufacturer, you mean the applicant's expert provided it to you?
Correct, but the the information is originated at the manufacturer.
Well, you got it from the applicant's expert. That's all I'm asking.
Correct.
Now, did you do any of your own modeling?
Yes, for some of, oh, we did two kinds of modeling. So one is for the the pumps, which comprise the most significant noise source inside the Teger building. We used a a model of pump noise, right? So rather than using manufacturer's data, we looked at, hey, for this type of pump at this rotational speed and this type of motor enclosure, what would the sound level be? And we then compared that to the manufacturer's data we received to do a reality check on it to make sure it makes sense.
Well, how do you do a reality check if you're not using the actual frequency, tone, and other classes of information that the manufacturer gave you?
So that when you when you model a sound source sort of from scratch, just based on how much air or fluid it moves and how fast it's spinning, what the what the math is normally based on is an assumption of an overall sound level that varies based on those parameters and any spectrum shape that's typical for the source that's assigned to that overall level.
Well, don't different pumps from different machines and different manufacturers emit different frequencies?
Yes, that's that's why this is a reality check. So allow me to answer the other part of your question. Did we do any modeling? The other sort of modeling we did is we took all the sound levels within the building and we added them together at the closest louver to location four and then attenuated it by the specified acoustical louver and then projected it across the amount of distance to location four that exists. Then we took the generator sound and the transformer sound and projected that over to the location four as well. And of course, that's not attenuated by the building because those are outdoor noise sources. So that that is the sort of modeling we did as a as a spot check. What I understand from the applicant's practice is that they is published professional software that works in three dimensions and takes into account environmental factors and the absorption of terrain and differing terrain heights and all that. Our role for the municipality is not to replicate that effort to an exact degree, but rather to spot check it. So our analysis was, like I said, more of a high level analysis where I say, hey, if we have this source and everything adds up to this point at the louver and we subtract the louver attenuation and we go three hundred feet or whatever it is, I get a number. My number is not exactly the same as the applicant's report and testimony says, but it's close enough for me to feel that using that more accurate methodology that the applicant used, that their results are reliable. And that's why I've told the public and the members of the board that this testimony is a believable thing that we can rely upon.
Well, what was the deviation between your numbers and their numbers?
Less than five decibels.
Less than five decibels. Now, would you agree that every ten decibel increase is a doubling of the intensity of sound?
I would say that it's a doubling of the perceived volume or loudness of sound.
So five decibels is a fifty percent increase in the perceived volume or loudness of the sound, correct?
Not exactly, because decibels are logarithmic, but within a reasonable degree of discussion, that's close enough.
So in other words, the deviation between what you found and what the university found could be as much as fifty percent. Isn't that correct?
Well, it's.
Yes or no? Is that correct?
I don't have to answer a yes or no question with a yes or no. I'm a I'm an expert here. We can't talk about percentages when you talk about decibels. It doesn't make any technical sense.
Well, as a rough figure, if you agree that a ten decibel increase is a doubling of the perceived sound, isn't it fair to say that as a general matter, a five decibel increase is a double is a fifty percent increase?
Yes, you can talk about percentages of how loud something is higher percentage or lower. You can't say it is fifty percent more decibels. That doesn't make any sense. So we have to be careful to not talk in that technical speak because it's not accurate.
Let me let's be clear. I didn't actually say that. I simply said, isn't it fair to say that a five decibel increase represents a fifty percent increase in the perceived sound intensity and volume?
Sure.
Thank you. You didn't provide those actual deviation figures to the board, did you?
We haven't developed figures. Our corroborating high level spot check on the applicant's model is based in an Excel worksheet.
But you just said that the deviation was up to five decibels, wasn't it?
Well, right. So we predict something in Excel. We get a number X. The applicant's acoustical consultant predicts a number Y. They've actually predicted a range, right? So like I testified to a few minutes ago, we predicted forty-five to forty-eight decibels. And I'm not sure what the applicant's exact range was because it's been a while since we talked. it's been a while since we talked about that, but we can pull that figure back up if we need to.
Simple question, you did not provide the actual figures you came up with to the board, did you?
Well, I couldn't have, there aren't any.
You just said, didn't you, that you had a deviation in the figures you had on the decibel levels, up to five decibels?
I'm sorry, let's clarify the word figure. Are you, do you mean a value, or do you mean in a visually, an exhibit?
I assume you meant a number of decibels.
Okay, sorry. When I use the term figure, I'm usually thinking about a picture.
Graphics here, we're dealing with numbers now.
Can you ask the question again, so I understand the context?
Ms. Keith, it's a simple question. Did you give the numbers showing the deviation between what you found and what the university reported to the board?
So well, the board, our findings didn't specifically call out the difference. So my role
Is the answer yes or no to my question? Did you provide them?
I provided our result to the board, and I compared it to the 50 dB A limit. I did not provide a direct comparison between the applicant acoustical consultant's result and our result.
So this is the first time anyone is hearing that your test was actually significantly higher than the results the university reported, isn't that correct?
No, I don't believe that my result is higher.
Well, didn't you say that your results went up to five decibels higher?
No, I said that I consider them accurate. No, I, I'm not sure what I said about five decibels. We can review the record if we need to, but no, I did not say that.
All right, well, we'll move on from there. The record is what it is. Excuse me, one moment. Have you issued a report on the latest changes the university has made?
The ones presented this evening?
Yes.
Similar to the emails I provided to Mr. Purcell, after the last, the previous two reports, I provided an email to Mr. Purcell. I'm sorry, because that's recent, I don't have it filed with this project, so give me a moment.
So that's not yet been given to the board, is that correct?
Mr. Purcell would have to answer that question.
Well, don't you know whether you gave it to anybody?
I gave it to Mr. Purcell. I don't know if Mr. Purcell passed it along.
Thank you.
Second email date was January 4th of this year.
What's that, Carrie?
The second email date you present, you provided was January 4th.
Right, but I also sent Mr. Purcell an email this Tuesday, February 16th, and it said, based on our review of the presentation that we saw, that that everyone is given tonight, we conclude that the approximately 10-decibel sound level reduction predict, predicted as a result of the proposed acoustical barriers are reasonable based on the noise control measures shown, i.e., we agree with what the, we agree with the results that were presented tonight acoustically.
Did you do the same kind of analysis or spot check comparison, as you call it, with respect to these new figures that you did with respect to the other sets of figures?
No, not specifically. And the reason is because when we get into barrier geometry, we're required to know a lot more about the relative height between the top of the equipment and the top of the barrier and
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, I'm hearing that I think the internet connection is breaking up.
Right. So, so the answer is no, we didn't carry out the exact same type of analysis. Can you hear me better now?
No, it's fine.
Okay. And the reason is, the knowledge required to do that involves knowledge of the relative heights of the top of the barrier and the bottom of the barrier and the top of the equipment being shielded and the bottom of the equipment being shielded. So in order to determine that the 10-decibel approximate reduction presented tonight was accurate and believable, I used my experience and knowledge of acoustical barriers to know that if we just barely, if we have a source and a receiver, and we just barely interrupt the line of sight with a barrier, we're going to attenuate about five decibels. And the applicant has demonstrated that their barrier protrudes significantly above and beyond this line of sight. And thus, the barrier presented tonight would reasonably be expected to achieve an approximately 10-decibel reduction based on my experience.
But you made that conclusion without the technical data that you said you did not have, is that correct?
Well, we were, we reviewed this, the same exhibits that were presented tonight, showing the top and bottom heights of the louvers and generator, excuse me, louvers and transformers, and the barriers going around them. And those clearly show that the the walls will be higher than the noise sources they're shielding. So I would, I would disagree with your characterization.
I said you didn't do the same kind of comparison you did earlier because you didn't have the height depths.
We did not model numerically the barrier effect of the noise attenuating measures that were introduced into the record tonight.
And had you modeled them numerically for the earlier figures?
They, those noise attenuating features did not exist for the earlier figures.
No, but did you model numerically the university's earlier decibel projections?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have for Mr. Keith, but we're going to have to do an analysis of the new sound figures we've received. So we may have further questions at the next meeting. I'd like to ask Mr. de Grazia, who on his team he feels can address with the greatest knowledge the actual manner in which the geo exchange system will function, including both the relation of the bore holes to the chillers, pumps, transformers, and of course, the transmit, the network system. So who on your team would have the best ability to address those issues?
Is that you, Ted?
Tom, I think let's go to Tom Nyquist.
I mean, Tom, I want to say Ted, yeah, Tom, Tom Nyquist.
Thank you, Mr. Nyquist, thank you. So I have a few questions for you.
Mr. Muller, you're muted. I saw
Yeah, have you been previously sworn?
Yes, I have.
All right, thank you.
Mr. McCoy indicated in one of his statements earlier in the proceedings that there are different terms of art people use for this type of project. Some people call it geothermal project. And Mr. McCoy, I believe, said the proper term would be a geo exchange plant. Is that, is that correct?
There's a lot of terms used in the industry. And sometimes people use different terms for the same thing. We use geo exchange.
Is that the same as geothermal?
The way I interpret geothermal is geothermal uses the hot rocks direct, they, they, they put hot water directly into hot rocks and pull the heat out as they do in Iceland or the West. And they don't really need heat pumps.
Okay, so what's the difference between the system here that you want to propose to build and a geothermal system as you've just described it?
So we're, we're essentially using the earth as a thermal battery. So in the summer, we're pulling heat out of the buildings with air conditioning. We're putting it into the water and then running that into the geo bores. And heat goes from the water into the rock, essentially. It stays there until the winter, and then we reverse the process. And we run water in and we pull the heat out, but we're pulling it out at a low temperature. And that's why we need heat pumps to pump it up to about 140 degrees. And we take that warm water into the buildings to heat buildings.
Before I go further, I just want to be clear, are you a licensed civil engineer?
I'm a licensed mechanical.
Now, and I don't recall specifically, you're employed by Princeton University, is that correct?
Correct.
And your, your job position at the university presently is?
Executive Director of Facilities Engineering and Campus Energy.
Is it fair to say you're essentially the chief engineer? Or chief of engineering?
I am. We have a chief engineer of the plant. My title is Executive Director.
Well, who reports to whom?
He reports to me.
Okay, thank you. So you are the, the highest level engineering official at the university, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, are you personally familiar with the design of the plant as is proposed on the, on this application?
Yes.
Who designed the plant, actually?
It was designed by a consulting engineer, Bryson McCall.
So you did not design it, but you're personally familiar with the nature of the design, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Now, I wanted to get into what you just I'll break it down, but let me ask you this.
So you, you just broke
How would you describe the function of this proposed build? Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Are we better now? We're good? How would you describe the function of this proposed project?
I just did. I, we're taking heat out of the buildings, all, all the campus buildings in the summer through the air conditioning process. We're putting that heat into the water. And the water flows in the tubes that are go down in the holes in the ground. Those, that water is warmed up a little bit, right, from, from the buildings. It's warmer than the earth, so the heat goes from the water in the tubes to the rock. And it warms it up just a little bit, but there's a lot of rock. And then in the winter, okay, this, this warm rock, we take that heat out. And we take it out with water in tubes. Water never contacts the earth. So the water in the tubes is a little cooler than the earth in the winter. So the heat flows from the rock to the water. That water warms up a little bit. We bring it back into the plant. And then the heat pump takes it and it concentrates that heat. And it takes it from a temperature of about 60 up to about 140. That's warm enough that we can then pump it into the buildings and blow air over the tubes and heat the air up and heat the buildings. So we're not having to create energy. We're able to store energy. We make the the heating and the cooling with electricity. And that electricity, we're going to buy renewable power. We're also building renewable power on the campus. And that's how we're going to drive our carbon footprint really, really loud.
So you're going to have a network of underground pipes that transmit this water to the different buildings, is that fair to say?
It's very similar to what we've had for 100 years.
What do you mean?
Well, we've had steam pipe underground since before the war, we've had chill water pipe installed in the 60s. It's very common. And now we're putting in some hot water pipe to take the water from the Teger facility to the various buildings.
Yeah, the steam pipes are similar to what you've had for 100 years, you meant, the piping system?
Yeah.
The underground pipes, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Now, the, the bore holes are dug how deep generally?
So we have, our first system was put in, in 2004. And that system's about 450 feet. Later systems went in about 550. This is going in about 850.
And those holes are where you store the water?
I store the water.
Where is the water going? I thought you said the water is going into the rock underground through the holes.
No, what I, what I actually said is, the water never contacts the ground. It stays in the tubes. So what we're doing is we're drilling an 850-foot bore hole. And we're putting a continuous plastic pipe down and back up. So it's a YouTube. So the water goes down and then back up, and that's the heat transfer device that we can move heat into the rock or take it out. Heat is not necess, is not water, right? We're just transferring temperature between the waters in the tube and the ground.
And the water is stored in these tubes in the
Flows in the tubes. We don't, we're not really storing it. It's continuously flowing.
The bore holes are designed, the bore holes are designed to draw the water down through these tubes and then to bring it back up again, is that correct?
Well, we use pumps to pump it down back.
Yes.
It's a, it's a simple YouTube. It's, it's, it's not rocket science.
A YouTube going down 800 feet, back up and down, right? Okay. Now, the bore holes are fundamental to the project, aren't they?
Correct.
Could you do this without the bore holes?
Well, Stanford University, as somebody alluded to earlier, does not have the bore holes. But they also have a cold temperature design point of about 40. Our design point's 10, so.
My question is directed to your project. Can you build this project as you've designed it and conceived it without the bore holes?
In, in, in our weather, with our heating and cooling balance, no, we cannot build a plant without geo exchange.
Okay, so you need the bore holes for this project, correct?
Yes.
Now, aside from the 44 bore hole that Mr. McCoy said are on hold, would you tell us how many bore holes are associated with this project? This particular geo exchange building we're talking about here?
I believe there's about 550. I don't remember the exact number.
And what is their geographic distribution from the point where the building will be built?
So the boards are going to be under the soccer field, which was before this board, a month or two ago. It's below the parking garage, also before this board several months ago. And that's, that's where the, the boards will be.
Is there any technical reason you were aware of that would prevent this project from being built next to Denunzio Pool as appeared in the master plan in December in 2017?
There is no technical reason why it couldn't be located further north on the site next to the parking garage in any of those general areas.
So the answer is, there's no reason it could not be at the location projected at, next to Denunzio Pool, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, how tall will the tanks be above the ground in the present version of the project?
That's I don't think that's a question for him, because he didn't testify to that. We can get, do you have the numbers, Ted? Do you feel, I mean, do you feel?
Chris, I don't have the exact number, but
I interrupted you. Please go on.
I don't think Tom testified to that before, so I can get somebody that did.
Well, does Mr. Nyquist know that information?
I don't know the exact number, so I'd be
So we'll, we'll figure that out at the next meeting then.
It's been brought up, and it's been on many of the drawings. It's, it's, it's a published number.
Are you familiar with the number of buildings that this particular project is intended to heat or cool?
This building is going to be tied in to heat pumps that are going to be put into our existing plants. So eventually, it's going to be one network system serving various buildings.
Well, I understand there is interconnectivity with the other two that are planned. But what number of buildings will this project be primarily serving, do you know?
It varies with time. So initially, it's going to be serving several new buildings in the area and like building conversion. several new buildings in the area and, and like building conversions in the area. So we have to convert the systems from steam to hot water. Right now, we have five or six buildings on the east campus being converted to hot water. And then on the, the western part of campus, west of Washington Road, we're looking at seven or eight buildings being converted right now.
You said you had another project of this nature in 2004?
We have a geo exchange system for an apartment complex at Lawrence. It's been operating now for 17 years, I guess.
You say that was in Lawrence?
Lawrence Apartments.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
It's down below the golf club.
Down below the golf club. Okay, thank you.
And it's been operating very successfully now for 16 years. We get very low energy bills and it has a very low carbon footprint. And it's been one of the reasons we wanted to expand the system campuswide.
Did you say you had another version of this somewhere or was that the one you reversed?
We actually have three of these systems.
I see.
And we have one in the new art, arts neighborhood. And that's actually the one that's most similar to this, and it's got chillers in it. And you, it's very quiet. It's a very good system.
Are there houses in the neighborhood?
I could not hear you.
Are there houses in the arts neighborhood?
There's dormitories in the, in the area.
But there aren't single family residences in that, in that zone, are there?
No. But I would like to add that the dormitories are closer than the houses will be, and you can't hear a thing.
Students are only there for four years, not their entire lives, correct?
But noise is only an issue at night, and there are many nights.
It's a different location, is that correct? And different structures, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a somewhat different system.
Thank you. The noise from the project that we're talking about here will be continuous noise, is that correct?
Not sure what you mean by continuous. Four, seven, 365, no.
Well, what do you expect it to be operating on? What schedule?
So we're going to be running the heat pumps most of the year because of their efficiencies. We may not be running both, but we'll vary between one and two. What the sound consultant ran their data on was worst case, and that's running two when it's, when it's warm out. And we have to have the vents open to cool the plant. And that's when a little bit of noise will go through those acoustic louvers. And that's really what we've been talking about. But most of the time, I shouldn't say most of the time, a lot of the time, those louvers will be closed and the sound levels will be even less than Julie predicted. And when we first need cooling in the plant, we will open the louvers on the west side of the plant, which face the parking garage and not the neighborhood.
Had, I haven't seen anything in the record about decibel levels concerning the situation when the louvers are closed.
The, 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 the sound levels will be even less. Closed. You shut a door, it's quieter.
Well, can you tell at this point how often the louvers will be closed or open?
No, at this point, that's, we can't give you an exact number on that. But for instance, if we were riding the plant on a night like tonight, the louvers would be closed.
Can you tell me based on experience?
I, I couldn't hear the question.
Bruce, can you repeat that? You broke up.
I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me?
Yeah, you broke up. Can you?
No, I repeat, thank you. I'll repeat that. Can you tell us from experience a plant of this nature, how frequently louvers are open versus closed?
We don't have a plant like this. So I can't really say exactly when the louvers will be open and when they, when they will be closed.
You can't say it all, is that correct?
No, I, I can say that whether like tonight, the louvers will be closed, but that plant will be very, very cold.
But you have no experience dictate to you, knowledge as to the normal operation?
Well, we do have louvers in the existing plant. It's a slightly different plant though. And the louvers are closed when it's cold out. They're open when it's warm.
What are the decibel levels in the plant at Lawrence?
The facility is a geo exchange system, but it has a different mechanical system to it. And it doesn't have a central plant. It has a heat pump in every apartment. So there are no louvers. It's a different type of system.
So you don't have a single concentrated central utility of this nature at present?
Not of this size, no. We have three geo exchange systems. Two are like the one I just explained, and then there's another one that's in between.
Where's that one?
That's in the Lewis Center for the Arts.
And that's inside a building at the Lewis Center, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
That's the one you referred to when you mentioned the arts neighborhood.
Correct.
And
I'd like to ring the five minute bell right now, just, just as a heads up.
Did your team conduct any acoustical studies for this project based upon the location at Denunzio Pool? Other than the proposal you've studied here and the other types of projects at Lawrence, say, or Lewis, is it fair to say that you don't have personal familiarity with the actual operation?
Say it again, Bruce. You broke up.
I'm sorry, I'll do that again. I don't know why it's happening. Other than what you've testified to, is it fair to say that you don't have personal familiarity with any other geo exchange, geothermal plant operations?
So when we were developing this project, we did due diligence and we visited three, we visited three different geos, three different heat pump plants. So we visited the heat pump plant in Stanford. We went out to a company in Madison, Wisconsin that had a geo exchange system. And I believe we want one, one other place, but I don't remember what it is right now. So we have, we have been to several facilities.
What, what kind of company was it in Madison?
It was a software company. They wrote software for hospitals.
And what was the third one type? What type of business was the third one? Do you remember?
We went to Ball State. It's a university in Indiana.
In where?
Indiana.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they have heat pumps very similar to what's being proposed for our project. They have a lot of geo exchange bores, very similar.
And is that, is that is that the extent of your familiarity with these, the operation of these types of projects?
Well, we have a chiller plant. And a heat pump that we're proposing is very similar to a chiller. They have water on both sides of the machines. So we have cold water on one side, hot water on the other. And we've had these chillers that are very similar in size in, in this plant since 1963 or 61. So long before I got here. So we have been operating a chill water plant now for decades. I'm very familiar, familiar with that. And the equipment is very, very similar.
That doesn't involve boreholes, does it?
I know it doesn't.
And.
Boreholes with the other facilities.
I beg your pardon?
We do have boreholes for the three other geo exchange facilities in there.
How many boreholes are on those facilities?
At the Lawrence, there's, I think it's 110. Lakeside is probably 150, and I don't remember what Lewis Center for the Arts was, 150, 200 or something.
Other than what you've testified to, are you familiar with the operation of any other geothermal or geo exchange plants?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
What you've testified to today, are you personally familiar with the operation of any other geothermal, geo exchange plants?
Well, we did do the due diligence and we visited three other plants.
I said, other than what you've testified to, are you familiar with the operation of any of, any geothermal, geothermal or geo exchange plants?
Just general reading in the engineering journals about the various plants. And we also rely heavily on our consultants who have designed many other plants. So we have a lot of their experience.
Excuse me, Mr. Afrin, can we?
Yes.
Call it a night?
Yes, we can.
Well, let me rephrase that. I would like to call it a night. It being 11 o'clock. And I know you're not finished, or I expect you're not finished questioning Mr. Nyquist, but we need to adjourn the meetings for reasons related to good government and our own mental and physical health.
It's fine, thank you.
Okay. Can we make the announcement, announcement again to carry it to the dates or in Madam Chair, so that's clear for the record?
Yes, we're continuing this to the, to a special meeting to be held March 11th, starting at 7:30. The agenda will be, this, this item alone, as an application, there might be some minutes or something else on the agenda. And the agenda will be posted on the town's website and a link to the meeting will be embedded in that agenda. Is that correct, Carrie?
Yes, and there will be no further notice to the public because we're making this announcement.
Anything else, Mr. Muller? Jerry, anything else?
Oh, no, nothing.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anybody see, I see you waving, Mr. Miguel.
Second.
Thank you. I have a question, Vice Chair.
Yes.
You said that this would be the only item on the agenda. If something comes up of administrative nature, if there's something that the council needs us to act on, can we use that date for that kind of activity or purpose?
Yes, and or, well, maybe not in ordinance, that wouldn't be, but minutes or some, something other administrative that.
I, I think we should rely on, on advice from Mr. Muller. It will depend on the nature of the item because there may be things that require notice.
Right.
If it doesn't come up in sufficient time to do the notice, we might not be able to put it on the agenda, so.
But this will be the first item we discuss, correct, or consider?
Yes.
Yes. I don't mean to interject. I know we just closed public portion and adjourned, but Mrs. Nissenbaum, who's represented by Mr. Afrin, has her hand up. I don't know what we need to do in this case.
Well, we're, we're adjourning the meeting. I would ask perhaps Mr. Afrin to connect with his client and.
She just lowered her hand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for that heads up. Okay, I think there was a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thanks very much.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.